Good evening. I want to begin by just confirming if we are, if the stream is active, our video stream. All right then, we will call the meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted tonight in accordance with the emergency directives from Governor Sisalak due to the pandemic. It's Emergency Directive 006, which was extended by Directive 016 and 018. Public comment during this period is restricted to items that are on the agenda. We may take items out of order or remove items from the agenda. The public comment, people were notified they could email those in ahead of time, or we will be providing a phone number for people to call in and make that public comment. And so we will open public comment, and it sounds as though we have someone on the line already.
Public comment.
Yes. Yes. Good evening, Council. This is Fred Volz. I'd like to comment on Items 12 and 13 this evening. In reading through the staff report for Item 12, it makes no mention of what happens to the Woodbury family's Red Mountain Music Company, or far more important to those struggling in our community, Emergency Aid. They're both current tenants of the DWP building. Is the city manager suggesting that they will be relocated to some other city facility? Will that facility be proximate to those who seek out the goods and services provided by Emergency Aid? Who will pay the moving costs? If it is the two current tenants, doesn't that new expense take away from their ability to deliver goods and/or services to the community at a particularly strained time? These obvious questions needed to be asked and answered but have been ignored in tonight's support materials. The Chamber of Commerce is likely paying rent at its current location in the Draining Building. Why should that change? Just because the Draining Building is being sold, can't the Chamber stay in that building? Most building owners, existing and new purchasers, are happy to retain paying tenants rather than trying to find new ones. The Chamber could relocate at any number of vacant storefronts along Nevada Way or Boulder City Parkway and still be proximate to its membership and to tourists. Why then does the Chamber of Commerce need to be in the DWP building and not paying rent? Why can't it co-locate in the Department of Interiors Visitor Center across the street, which has great off-street parking? This idea was previously offered to the city manager but ignored. The Chamber has income from its membership dues, sponsored events, and the sale of items, and has been paying rent to the Draining Building owners. So why is it suddenly unable to pay its customary operating expenses? None of these basic questions have been asked and answered by city staff so that council can make an informed decision. Send this issue back to the city manager for the appropriate due diligence and research. Regarding Item Number 13, the city manager and his people simply don't grasp the enormity or severity of upcoming revenue declines, or they would not continue to insist on completing the overpriced StanTech contract. Spend other people's money as though it were your own seems to be a standard lost in our city manager. Most of the StanTech information already provided is not actionable by the city. We do not have $220 million-plus to spend on the long list of capital projects offered up as necessary. We do not have money to spend on redesigning City Hall for a pointless customer service function suited to a large metropolis, and that can be easily accomplished with the existing layout and staff. The StanTech consultants failed to do any analysis of geological or seismic issues related to city buildings, but their report contained many duplicate and irrelevant pictures of no value. The city needs to stop spending money on one consultant after another and start doing this work in-house, particularly with all the staff additions this city manager has secured. Even if it means well-paid, salaried staff must work nights, weekends, and holidays. Let's not proceed with the final installment of the StanTech project and save the public $95,000. We have wasted more than enough money already for a binder of information that took much longer than it should have to prepare, and that will join other consultants' projects gathering dust on some city employee's bookshelf. And I ask that these comments be added verbatim to the meeting's official record. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the phone line is open now. If anyone would like to call in, the phone number is (702) 589-9629.
I'd like to share a public comment, please. This is Jill Legan from the Chamber. I'd like to share comments tonight regarding Agenda Item Number 12. In preparing for this item to be heard by council, I've had the opportunity to visit with some of the council members. Their questions have been excellent, and I wanted to publicly share some of the information exchanged so that members of the public might also understand the Chamber and its mission better. The Boulder City Chamber is the oldest community's supporting entity in the city. It was opened in 1932 and has spent the last 88 years providing information to tourists, promotion for business, events for fundraising, and connections for residents and future residents. It is a full-service organization that strives and provides quality of life for our residents, and a healthy business climate for our employees and owners. Maybe a better description of the Chamber other than an organization which is planted would be an organism that is a constant motion and taking action on behalf of the community. Where we find a gap, we find a solution. Through the years, we have developed an excellent working relationship with the city of Boulder City and partnered on many aspects of city life by way of assisting with the city events, providing support with economic development and business retention efforts, developing a network with other municipalities and their staff in chambers, and assisting staff with answering questions from the public seeking solutions. No other organization represents the business community like the Chamber. No other brand is recognized across the globe as an organization fighting for the rights of the employees and employers. And no other group balances the needs of the community and the business community with the general community like the Chamber. Right now, your Chamber is trying to figure out how to navigate complicated government processes and protect the rights of the communities so that the owners can stay focused on keeping their businesses afloat and residents can be assured a reopening will be managed responsibly. The B.C. Chamber is a nonprofit, 501(c)(6), and maintains three other corporations that are 501(c)(3), IRS-designated nonprofits as well. We have many counterparts in the rural Nevada area that have the same mission: to empower, educate, and execute. Most of our rural Chamber friends do have one thing significantly different from Boulder City: they have been subsidized by their own township, city, or county in some way. In doing some research for tonight, I spoke with eight of my peers to understand their relationship with their communities. Two are housed within City Hall, several are in county buildings, one in the convention center, and one inside a historic building that operates their tourism museum. All have contracts for service with their cities and/or verbal agreements with their community. Their offices are provided by the entity as part of the contract for service, with the exception of the one inside a historic building. They own their own space. Some of the services provided by the chambers in those contracts are tourism activities like map creation and distribution, relocation information distribution, and visitor services. Some have bids and T-bids in their communities, and the chambers receive a designated portion of their contract. One had an event contract with the city for the time to coordinate efforts to produce community events. Several receive room tax increments to run their visitor center operations. This has not been the arrangement with the city of Boulder City and the Chamber. We have been very fortunate to have our previous offices privately donated on an annual basis, just like we have for the last 10 years. We do not pay rent, and this has been provided as the opportunity to utilize all available funds for our advertising contracts instead. Ad programs like radio ads, television commercials with KLAS. We also distribute over 375,000 Boulder City brochures that are distributed annually via certified folder display racks in western state visitor centers, airports, convention bureaus, and hotels. The Boulder City Chamber doesn't charge a fee when it helps produce community events for other nonprofits like the Pooch Parade and the Homecoming Parade. Those are often at the Chamber's expense in order to add to the quality of life of our residents and fundraising for our other nonprofits. The graduate parade on Thursday night is sponsored by the Chamber and is created out of love and respect for our families and the current situation that leaves seniors without much of the pomp and circumstance they deserve. Maybe one or two of those grads will return to B.C. someday and open up a successful business that will contribute to the tax base of the city and will see the cycle of resistance in business life go on. On a daily basis, we are on the phone or meeting in person with a resident that is looking for answers on how to start a nonprofit or a business, or needs help putting on an event or spreading the message of their cause. Yesterday, I spent over an hour on the phone with a longtime resident asking me for help in planning her family reunion and finding activities for both young and old to enjoy their time together. We have helped teachers put together scavenger hunts that teach about the historical significance of places and sites in their kids' own backyards, right here in Boulder City. Just this morning, we called and talked to a very super-sweet lady that had called our office on Monday after the State of Emergency Directive and was searching for answers as to who to call for Meals on Wheels because, as she stated, she was getting very hungry. We were able to connect her with the senior center that day, and I'm happy to report she and a super-response from Victoria staff is doing very well despite going blind and being alone. The Chamber exists for you and for me. Right now, the business community looks to us to remove confusion, fear, doubt, and darkness, and to replace it with assurance, optimism, clarity, and hope. We are here for the solar companies in the Old Roder Valley and for the solar panel user on Gurley Street.
Ms. Legan?
We're here for the senior graduation party and the senior get that gives the community for volunteer.
Excuse me, Ms. Legan. Ms. Legan?
I'm sorry.
You're over the five minutes. I would appreciate if you could conclude your remarks, please.
Okay. So, we're here for the long-life resident in search of a book of fun family activities and soon-to-be resident looking to leave a very snowy eastern state. We are grateful we can be there for each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is available now. And anyone wishing to call in for public comment, the initial public comment period, All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have email submittals?
Yes.
Would you like to read those at this time?
Sure.
Thank you.
The first public comment is from Fred Bachhuber, representing Lendahand. Mr. Bachhuber states, "I wish to comment on Resolution Number 7097 and Bill Number 1873, both related to matters pertaining to the lease of Cottage III at ABC Park. For over 30 years, Lendahand of Boulder City has been providing critical services to seniors and physically challenged citizens. Starting as a small organization in 1989, our home has been provided by St. Christopher's Episcopal Church. However, the growth of our community and the subsequent increase in the senior population have seriously constrained our ability to service those in need. It has become clear that in order to continue our service to the community, we must have an expanded and upgraded facility. After exploring many options, Lendahand is focused on Cottage III at ABC Park, a property owned by the city. While it has taken almost two years for Lendahand to arrive at this particular point this evening, our journey has had the encouragement of former and current city council members. We thank the present council for considering our request at this time. It is understood that we would not be here this evening without the continuing support of Mayor McManus and the efforts and cooperation of certain city staff. We are especially appreciative of staff members Brock Armentraut, Michael Mays, and Susan Daniel Levich. The hope and aspirations of Lendahand's staff and volunteers are that we can continue to expand and meet the needs of seniors and disabled residents of Boulder City." Next is Blair Davenport, who is a member of the B.C. Historic Preservation Committee. And this is regarding Item Number 12. "Please consider adding or correcting the following to the premises license agreement for emphasis and clarification. The second whereas owner owns a building commonly known as the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Building (AD), an historic building located within this Boulder City Historic District 600 Wyoming Street. Section 4, Use of Premises (Purpose): Licency may remodel the assigned office space to make it suitable for use as an office and tourism promotion facility to further the purposes of their organization. All work must," and she states, "AD, not alter or damage the historic materials in the building. All work must receive prior approval." Section 8, Licency Provided Amenities and Improvements: The licensee shall maintain at its expense all licensee-provided furniture, office equipment, restrooms, and fixtures in good repair during the term of the agreement. Question: Is city owner providing restrooms and licensee maintaining restrooms, or is licensee providing and maintaining restrooms? The city shall maintain the exterior grounds of the facility until such time the licensee makes additional improvements to the exterior landscaping of the facility. At such time said improvements are made, licensee will assume responsibility for maintenance of the exterior grounds. Level of maintenance provided by the city shall be at their discretion. Comment and question: Licensee responsibility for landscape improvements and maintenance is outside the scope of this interior or "assigned office space" agreement. If licensee is allowed to make landscape improvements, clarify in Section 4, and city owner should approve first. See Section 9, Alterations. Comment and question: There is a 2007 Nevada Department of Cultural Affairs SHPO deed restriction attached to the LADWP building. Should it be referenced in the agreement? Is a city required to consult with SHPO for leasing and/or landscape improvements? Next is from Judy DeShane. Item 9, Permanent Buildings permitted on RV lots. Who is going to be responsible to make sure permits are obtained for buildings of 200 square feet on RV lots, which is 80 square feet more than 120 square feet allowed by city code? Who is responsible to make sure permits are obtained and inspections done for plumbing and electrical? Who is currently responsible to make sure 180-day occupancy is enforced? From what is stated, the HOA cannot police the homeowners coming and going, so how will they enforce these new changes? The city cannot rely on current HOA board statement to determine code language. HOA boards and CCNRs change. From the letter from a current owner at the end of info for this item and packet, it does not appear the HOA has made it apparent or imposed city code on its owners up to now. HOAs can make their rules more stringent than city, but they do not supersede city codes. I don't agree with the 200-square-foot in the text amendment. It indicates that it is allowed by the city. That needs to read 120 square foot as maximum without a city permit, and all improvements to a structure needs to be per city codes and permits. I am opposed to the wording "as-is." Please fix it before approving. Item 12. Chamber of Commerce moving to LADWP. Is this in any way going to affect Emergency Aid? Is this the start of someone's vision to make it a visitor's center and museum in that building? Isn't Chamber concerned about impression visitors will have with the EA customers coming and going? Remember, part of the reasoning to move the museum was that it wasn't a good impression for visitors to see the EA customers coming and going right at the gateway to the downtown business area. Why did it only take a month for city staff to solve the Chamber's problem, but it's taking months since last November or so to solve the Lendahand need? Is there separate meters for all the building tenants for utilities so everyone pays their own bills? What entrance would Chamber use? Only saw 188 entrance, and that's the one EA customer's use. Is city allowing signage on the building? Not in favor of. Will city still be giving grants to the Chamber for advertising purposes? Why is there a dollar figure for fair rental of Building III to Lendahand, but none for the Chamber use of LADPW? With the current financial challenges for many residents, any actions by the city that adversely affects Emergency Aid cannot be allowed. Please get answers first. I strongly feel there are a lot of questions to be answered before this is agreed to by council and all other options considered. I have no problem with helping the Chamber, but I do wonder about the very different approach and speed of city help they get compared to Emergency Aid and Lendahand. Item 3, Cancel the StanTech Agreement Immediately. It is plain idiocy to continue paying for plans we cannot afford to implement. With the anticipated drop in revenue due to the lockdown, the citizens cannot afford to revamp City Hall or the Police Department at this time. We were told the city is expecting a $9 million drop in revenue. Almost all of our businesses will be struggling for a couple of years, trying to get back to where they were. Many of our residents have been hit extremely hard by layoffs. City manager, staff, and employees will have to make do with what they have for work arrangements for a few more years at least. Next is Nancy Deneen regarding Item 10. My name is Nancy Deneen, and I live at 1415 Denver Street. I'm very concerned about the proposed text amendment to change existing zoning to allow a funeral home right below my property. The impact to mine and my neighbor's property will hopefully be taken into account before a decision is made by the council. We appreciate your understanding of our concerns and invite you to personally visit this neighborhood to validate our objection. Next is from Mark Delaney regarding Item 14. I would like to add my support for the selection of John Bacon to the Airport Advisory Committee. I have known John since 2001 I brought my plane to the airport. Through his business, Aero Marine LLC, he has ensured my airplane was a safe and reliable platform for our family to fly. He is totally honest, trustworthy, and reliable, and I trust him with my life. John has been involved in aviation most of his life. He managed FBOs and maintenance shops in California with his family for many years. Since he has been in Boulder City, he has been active at the Boulder City Airport, not only at maintaining aircraft for numerous folks, but also flying with the Boulder City Veterans Pilots Group in support of the July 4th Danbury flyovers. In short, John is very active at our airport and has a great reputation. Based on his extensive aviation experience, his knowledge of the Boulder City Airport environment, and his previous experience as an airport advisory committee member, John Bacon is the best choice for selection to the open position. Next is Bob Fonstock regarding Agenda Item 13. Please have my comments on Agenda Item Number 13 as pertain to the possible termination of the StanTech City Hall Customer Service Improvements Contract read into the record during the first public comments period. I want to thank Councilwoman Hoskins for having this item brought back before the city council and the public. The world today is a very different from the one that existed at the beginning of the year. Spending money today like there is no tomorrow, when we know that tomorrow will bring significant shortfalls in revenues, is simply unacceptable. The trend in recent years has been for the city to spend more on studies and consultants for more and more questionable purposes. The justification for spending $170,000 of RDA money on the 2017 Hoover Dam Gateway Project study was to address pressure, well, quote, "pressure from the development community to lease out land around the new interchange," end quote. I failed to see how the developers could have applied pressure to the city, or how the city's residents were benefited by that expenditure. The city has historically been very generous in paying for memberships and professional organizations, travel and lodging to attend professional events, and training for its officers, department heads, and staff. If this was money well-spent, there should be a considerable pool of in-house talent and resources to draw from. In the tight times to come, we need to take full advantage of the investment that has already been made in existing staff before spending scarce tax dollars on external resources. The city has a number of resident-subject matter experts who serve on its various committees and commissions. If these residents charged, like the consultants did, instead of giving freely of their time and knowledge, the city's officers and staff might attach more importance to their recommendations. The residents that volunteer have proven to be less likely influenced by city staff and the paid funds for compensation that were intended to produce a non-bias report. Our neighbor to the north, the city of Henderson, has greatly improved its customer service function and access to public records. Has anyone from Boulder City made contact to determine which of Henderson's programs, practices, and policies might be implemented here at little to no cost? Councilwoman Hoskins has taken an important first step, and I hope the rest of the council will support her. It is unfortunate that the city is already out of $400,000 on the StanTech contract. It would be even more unfortunate if the city was out the full $500,000. What difference is $100,000 going to make? In terms of the new normal, a term former city manager Vicky Mays introduced during the tough times 10 years ago, the difference may well come down to whether the city keeps or cuts staff and services in the future. Next is Glenn Phan. Item 12 concerning giving the Chamber of Commerce the LADWP building. With the rescheduling of last week's council meeting, I have one sum checking on chambers of commerce. Chambers are 501(c)(6), not a (c)(3). The difference is that the (c)(6)'s only exist to serve their members, not the general community. The promotion of tourism is for the benefit of the membership of the chamber. General community is ancillary. Dues paid to a chamber are 75% business expense deductible, not charitable, and 25% is not deductible as it is for political lobbying. Apparently, the Chamber was given use of the tourist information building on the hill on Nevada Way with a rest picnic area that is totally unused, and they could move there. There is nothing in the lease that states what area and how much of the building is being given to the chamber. There is no dollar value in the lease for the private use by the Chamber of a citizen-owned building. Why is a quasi-nonprofit getting special benefits? The lease says Chamber is responsible for their utilities, but there is nothing that says who's going to pay for the necessary changes, as there is only a single meter for the whole building. This is a citizen-owned historic building, but the lease allows for Chamber to make changes in the building. Why should the city give use of any part of a citizen's own building to an organization that exists for its members only? The lobby and conference group room is used for various public gatherings. What happens to those uses by citizens? The claim that the building is ADA compliant is false. Only the entrance used by Emergency Aid customers is ADA compliant. The lease is open-ended and allows for multiple options a year at a time. It literally gives the citizen-owned building to the Chamber for life. I was not happy about this last week, but after doing some digging, I am now actually angry about this move by the city to give this building away. I was told by someone this move was suggested in the StanTech report. I do not know if that is true. This giveaway was not brought before the Historic Preservation Committee. These wild emergency actions and proposal by city staff are way out of hand. Every-- Every month, the staff there seems find a critical need that the council is supposed to rubber stamp. I suggest no more than a six-month lease for this quasi nonprofit so they can find and lease space in BC. There are vacant commercial buildings on the soon-to-be-completed Boulder City Parkway that have plenty of available parking and are vacant. These locations would be far more convenient and be easier to find and notice as visitors come into town. Next is Charles Hauntz regarding Agenda Item 12. My only concern with the agreement is that there is a total lack of recognition that the building is one of the most visible historic properties in the city. As usual, the staff has completely ignored the Historic Preservation Committee because they have no concern for the opinion of the committee and the current city ordinances regarding historic preservation are so weak that they essentially don't exist. Section 9 of the proposed agreement makes no mention of maintaining the historic character of the spaces being leased. The only requirement for making alterations is that such alterations shall be made, quote, "without first obtaining the written consent of the owner," end quote. Any alterations must conform to current Boulder City building codes and must be approved by the city's building department. Again, not even a drive-by wave at the need to consider any of the historic character of the interior of the building. The last sentence of Section 9 is particularly objectionable. Consent to the licensee's proposed alterations shall not be unreasonably withheld by owner. If that's not a blanket invitation for the licensee to do whatever they want, I don't know what is. I would hope the council would consider postponing final decision on this lease agreement until some of the language is tightened up. I personally have no objection to the Chamber occupying a portion of the building so long as the operation of the emergency aid group is not adversely affected. The location is great for both tourists and locals, and the Chamber undertakes many worthwhile functions. I hope an equitable agreement can be made that satisfies the Chamber and provides ironclad protection of the historic features of the building. Next is Chad Hesterman regarding Item 14. Hello, council members, and thank you for your service to our city. I would like to recommend John Bacon to the Airport Advisory Committee. I've known John for many years, and he is a well-respected and responsible citizen of Boulder City. He is one of the hardest workers I know and is always willing to help out a pilot in need at the Boulder City Airport. He is very knowledgeable mechanic that will give a unique and independent perspective to the Airport Advisory Committee. Please consider Mr. Bacon for the vacant position on the AAC. Sincerely, Chad Hesterman, Boulder City resident and active airport user. Next is Scott Meyer regarding Item 10. I am strongly opposed to this action and proposed change to the zoning ordinance as mentioned in Bill 1871 for three main reasons. One, there is a major safety issue with an additional business. The city just made Reflection Park a legal park, so kids and others will come and play there right across the street from this proposed business. This is a residential neighborhood. The street is already busy enough because most of the people who live on the lakeside of Boulder City use Colorado Street to get to the post office. Two, there is more than enough correctly zoned commercial land in Boulder City that would be much more appropriate. One major example is the southeast corner of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive at the stoplight. There is a large commercial plaza that is already well landscaped, paved, and ready for occupants. Traffic will not be a problem. It has not been developed past this stage for well over five years. It should be used now. In about 1977, the city council proposed to zone Colorado Street, this very same area, as commercial or perhaps neighborhood commercial. Many residents, including myself, were led by Ms. Miriam Short, who lived on the house on Nob Hill, now the westernmost home on Denver Street. And we strongly opposed that proposal, and supposedly, we won. I spoke at that council meeting, and I distinctly remember asking Mr. Ferraro, one of the councilmen, after the vote was taken, whether this issue would be able to surface again to rezone the area in some form of commercial zoning. He said absolutely not. Colorado Street would not be changed from pure residential zoning. Well, in late 1977, due to my active-duty status in the United States Air Force, I moved away from Boulder City but kept my residence. On my return in 1988, much to my dismay, I noticed that Mr. Ferraro misspoke in 1977 because there were businesses on Colorado Street, North Side and West of Ash Street. This was not supposed to be able to happen. Therefore, what is to prevent full commercial zoning, more businesses, a crematorium, et cetera, on Colorado Street at some point in the future? This is a residential area. Please keep it that way. Perhaps you could reduce the commercial footprint that exists now. Next is Sharon Newby regarding Agenda Items 12 and 13. Good evening, council. Thank you for your COVID-19 updates and everything else the city has done to help our residents. I have two resolutions I would like to speak in favor of tonight. First, Resolution 7097, the leasing of Cottage 3 to Lendahand. I support leasing the ABC Park property for zero rent with Lendahand responsible for all improvements. They do so much for our residents, even under the current circumstances. I would like to see BC help them as much as possible with the extensive improvements that are needed at the cottage. With everything that has been canceled, some city staff must have extra time. My second resolution I would like the city council to support is Resolution 7099. This is canceling the remaining agreement with StanTech Consulting Service for improvements to City Hall Customer Service. BC is known for being fiscally responsible. If you recall, this started as a simple inventory of city-owned buildings. It morphed into something with a price tag of more than $488,000. At this time, we could not afford to go further with this project, and it should be canceled. The city has already paid StanTech $393,305.42. That is around 80% of the contract. The contract allows for cancellation with seven days' written notice. It is the best interests of the city with our current situation to cancel this contract. Thank you. Next is Sandy Pregler regarding Item number 10. I oppose having a mortuary in the location on Colorado Street as it is close to residential homes. We who live in this area do not want to live where bodies are being embalmed and cremated. This area is in the historical district, and I oppose having a mortuary. Thank you, Sandy Pregler. Next is Mary Ann Ray regarding Item number 10. My husband and I have lived at this address for over 25 years. We and all of our neighbors strongly object to the proposed text amendment allowing a mortuary, funeral home, and columbaria in a residential neighborhood. Because this was a text amendment, we were never notified by the planning commission and afforded an opportunity to voice our objections. Recently, the zoning was changed for Reflection Park and the old filtration plant to retain the significance of this uniquely historic neighborhood. We feel that we, the neighbors and residents of this neighborhood, should have a stronger voice than developers who do not live here. As always, we are the ones left to deal with any and all adverse consequences. Mary Shope regarding Items 10A and B. Please deny opposed Bill 1871 regarding funeral homes even as a conditional use in the historical residential neighborhoods. There are too many negative impacts to the residents of the city. Thank you, Mary. Bruce Williams regarding Item 14. I am the lessee of Hangar 124 at the airport where I keep an aircraft. I support the appointment of John Bacon to the Airport Advisory Committee. I have known John for some 20 years, and he has provided exemplary service to me and other aircraft owners and operators. He understands the details of how general aviation operates, and he can help the city make informed, prudent, and practical decisions about the operations of and planning for the airport. Glenn Youngs regarding Item 14. I recommend John Bacon for the appointment to the Airport Advisory Committee. I have known John for years, and he is a well-respected and responsible citizen of Boulder City. He is a very knowledgeable technically regarding aviation matters, honest and hardworking. Please consider Mr. Bacon for the vacant position on the AAC, Glenn Youngs. And that includes the written comments regarding specific agenda items.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for your efforts in reading all of those. Again, we are still in the initial public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, anyone wishing to speak in the initial public comment period? The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment.
This is Dr. Valerie McNae. I sent an email in that was supposed to be read tonight, and it wasn't. So I guess I can read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McNae. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Dr. McNae, 26-year resident.
Dr. McNae?
Yes, can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm submitting these comments.
Dr. McNae, it's best to turn down whatever device you're streaming this on and just respond to the phone rather than the live feed. There is a delay on the live feed.
So I'm not sure what your...
Uh, go ahead with your comments at this time, please.
Would it be better for Lorraine to read it? If it's having a communication problem here on the line? Because she has my email, I think.
If you have it, Dr. McNae, go ahead and read it.
Okay, but it sounds like I'm having a communication problem.
We can hear you.
Okay. I keep hearing the mayor talking. So I can go ahead now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, the BC Chamber of Commerce has achieved its mission to promote business and commerce to our community. Our city makes annual grants to the Chamber to be used for marketing BC. The Chamber is a separate entity from the city. I believe that the city should not be providing office space for a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. The Chamber's CEO, office manager, and board members should be investigating office space in the business community. The Chamber's current location is centrally located in Old Town across from our awesome Boulder Dam Hotel Museum. The Poit family has sold the building where the Chamber currently resides. Over the years, rent there has been essentially free. I do not know what the terms are if any of the new owners has discussed with the Chamber, but I do know that the Chamber wants to move and continue to be rent-free with a budget of $360,000 or shitty funds for some rent payment. My primary concern about this resolution is the permitting of the Chamber to use office space in our wonderful historic LADWP building at 600 Nevada Way, which houses emergency aid at Boulder City. Our Boulder City community and city supports, donates, and volunteers to this nonprofit because emergency aid provides food, rental, utility, and other financial assistance to Boulder City residents facing emergency needs, especially now. The LADWP building is located in wheelchair-accessible and walking distance from any of our neediest residents. The LADWP building also has a much-needed loading dock for food, pantry donations, and other drop-offs and pickups. The families facing emergency needs and the entirely volunteer staff are concerned that certain city employees are wanting to remove emergency aid from the LADWP building because they don't like the inneed and disabled people in the area. Permitting a marketing business like the Chamber to move in is potentially the first step in this process. Emergency aid is not the only tenant in the LADWP building. Red Mountain Music Company in Boulder City also maintains offices in the LADWP building. The Red Mountain Music Company welcomes everyone who enjoys singing. The staff members, artistic coordinators, and board members consist of 18 well-known and respected citizens. And the non-audition choir, age 14 and up, consists of approximately 50 residents and musicians. Everyone in BC loves the Red Mountain Music Company performances at the Elaine Case Theater. The LADWP building's main entrance has a beautiful vestibule decorated with historic artwork and photographs that are part of the Boulder City Museum's audio tour. Beyond the vestibule's decorated gate is a gorgeous ballroom with stage, amazing ceiling lighting, a counter and kitchen area to serve food and beverage during special events. Nevada Humanities has presented authors and musicians in the setting. The Boulder City History and Arts Foundation has mount performers to the stage in this historic building. Bluegrass groups have performed here for contrasizing sessions. Best of all, Parks and Recreation staff offer classes and dances in this great space. Please help the Boulder City Chamber to continue their mission, but not in the LADWP building. There are many possibilities: the flower shop, empty banks, the hotels, the Plaza. I was under the impression that the closed visitor's center, RTCL, BCBCA, at the intersection of Ottawa and US 93, was a possible site for the BC Chamber. Thank you for listening, and please pursue the LADWP building for all the current wonderful programs there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, we do have the phone line available for public comment. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, the phone line is available for public comment. The number is 702-589-9629.
Hi, is there a vacancy on the Airport Advisory Committee that you're looking to fill?
This portion of the agenda is devoted to public comment. There is an agenda item for a position on the Airport Advisory Committee. Was there some comment you would like to offer for that?
If there is a vacancy, I would like to nominate someone, but I wasn't sure how I would know that there was a vacancy. I would know that there was a vacancy available. How would I gain that information?
Uh, it is posted in our agenda for the meeting this evening, along with people who have submitted forms for consideration.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I've missed that. Is there a way to still nominate someone?
Um, I believe nominations are open at this time, if you would like...
She doesn't nominate. You could nominate. She could support.
Yes, if you'd like to make a comment and support of someone, the council may or may not consider that during that agenda item, if you would like to make a statement in support of a particular person.
Yes, I'd like to, please. Okay, I personally would like to nominate someone. Am I allowed to do that at this time?
Well, again, you can make a statement supporting someone, and it would be up to each council member to consider that when we get to that agenda item.
Okay. I would like to make a statement in support of Simon Whitley, who is the Director of Operations at Patheon Helicopters. He is a... I'd like to support Simon Whitley. He is a representative of the helicopter commercial operators community at the airport.
What's your name, ma'am?
Danny Whitley. D.A.N.I.
Could you repeat your first name again, please?
Danny. D.A.N.I.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hey, the phone line is available for public comment during our initial public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to make comment during our initial public comment period? Uh, the phone line is available. The number is 702-589-9629. Again, the phone number for public comment is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others for public comment then, we will close the initial public comment period and move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney is also negative on changes. Bring it back to council for any changes on the regular agenda.
No changes.
Thank you. Uh, look for a motion then to approve the regular agenda as published.
Move to approve the regular agenda as published.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous then. Uh, we'll now move to approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
Yes, Mayor Staff is recommending the removal of item number four, please.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Thank you. Bring that back to council also. Any changes or discussion?
Um, Mayor, I request that item number five be moved to the regular agenda, please, for discussion.
All right. Any other changes being requested?
No changes.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Folda, would you like to make a motion then for that?
I move to approve the consent agenda with changes.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also unanimous. All right, we will take item number five then as our first item on the regular agenda. That would be our Public Works Director, Mr. Keegan Lutrell.
I have to run from upstairs. Closer or further. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Lutrell, your Public Works Director. Before you, item number five is for the agreement with LGA Architecture for the professional services for the railroad museum road design. Uh, this contract is for 200, about $240,000 for the design. Uh, the reason that we had selected LGA to do this design work is their existing state contract and their prior work that they've already done for the conceptual designs and the layout of what the grand scheme of the whole park is going to consist of. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Folda?
Okay, so I asked this to be brought forward. Um, in the past, when this was brought forward, I had asked for additional information on this item. Sorry, I'm trying to adjust, having been lefty over here. Okay, so, um, previously I had requested several items be explained further before this be voted on to move forward. One of those was the use of professional services. Where the City Attorney did get back to me on whether or not a design for a public works qualifies as a public work or as a professional service. Under professional services, a design work can be hired and implemented without bid. However, I just, as maybe we can discuss in the future, because this is a concern, that we have a project that's tax-funded, and although there is a provision that professional services may be moved forward without bid, that we as a city provide that when it reaches a certain dollar amount, or that we can, in the future, look at a more transparent way of how we're reaching out to those professional services. That was my one, so I wanted council to know that that was in part addressed, but I'd like to bring that up again in the future. The second part was the agreement that we have for this land. It's a little unusual. Back, let me get my notes up here. Okay, so back in 2018, we got into and made a agreement between the State of Nevada State of Lands, creating a joint-use land agreement for this railroad museum expansion. So, in 2018, that's the agreement that we made. So, the background of that was that, um, in 1985, Union Pacific Railroad Company, they gave a, donated a quitclaim deed to the Wright and Interest Way, to the State of Nevada, for the establishment of the Southern, Northern, sorry, I can't talk anymore. Nevada Southern Railroad Museum, and they have a right-of-way through, around the intersection of Buchanan to about Canyon Road. The city, however, owns the fee title to those parcels as granted in the Boulder City Act of 1958. So, the agreement, and this is the background, from the agreement which we made with them, it says, "This agreement formally recognizes Boulder City's surveying land interest and state's right-of-way interest and reaffirms land use rights for each party, including an approval process between the parties for any alterations or improvements." My concern is that we follow the process that we agreed on in 2018 between the two parties, us, city, and the state, for any alterations or improvements to that land. Under... Sorry. Number seven of the agreement, alterations, additions, and improvements. "All improvements or in a party's land right-of-way interest at the time of execution of this agreement shall remain the property of that party and shall be maintained by that party. Any time during this agreement, a party may subject to the prior written approval of the other party install, you know, or make additions, alterations, or improvements. They may do so with prior written approval of the other party." So, what I was requesting previously was, do we have any prior written agreement with the state to create this easement? I asked city staff. I've asked, again, now, City Manager. City Manager, do you have any update on that request?
I do not.
Okay. So, my concern with this is that we're following the procedure that we entered with the state to help both parties. I know that we have, we have both agreed that we both have interests. I just want to ensure that we're providing for the pre, you know, the agreement that we made two years ago, that any changes that we made to the party will be approved with prior written approval.
So, I do want to mention, though, that I do believe that there was an agreement that was entered between the state and the city relating to, we would not withhold the ability to move forward with this project unreasonably. So, I believe the Public Works Director is familiar with that. You know, obviously, if the council wants to pursue getting more formal easements, you know, certainly that will then continue to delay the project, but I believe that, if I recall correctly, it was the previous council that did approve that agreement in trying to move this project forward in coordination with the state's efforts.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record, I don't have any, I don't disagree with this particular project and for what it will eventually bring for the, for our city and for the railroad museum. However, I do, I'm kind of a stickler for when we get into a contract or agreement that we follow the terms that was given. That's where my concern lies, and I just want to make sure that's clear, that I'm not trying to delay a project because I don't, I disagree with it, but I do want to follow the provisions it was, that we got into with the other party. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Uh, yeah, I guess I would just like to say that I was a little bit disappointed just in that previously council had directed staff to provide a little bit more information, and I'm happy to hear that Councilwoman Folda was reached out to and had some of those questions answered. Uh, and while I may personally not have had the same questions, it still would be nice if, you know, when we do ask for additional information, that it be provided to everybody here on council, just so that we can review, see what that information is, and, you know, included in this packet, because, you know, essentially, this item was tabled for some clarification, and then it comes back and it looks exactly the same with none of that additional information. So, I would just like to see that, you know, in that direction for providing additional information, that it be included, even if the person requesting it maybe hadn't gotten it, and I'm glad that they did, but it does just help all of us to stay on the same page, so.
Definitely makes sense.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm really, I'm a little upside-down on the party of the first part and the party of the second part. What would be required to make this appropriate in terms of a, we sign on the dotted line, and I'm assuming it's the state, that they sign on the dotted line, so it comes back as, this is a formal document, unless that document already exists, that this is a formal document agreeing that we're going to make these improvements, and both parties involved in a previous agreement would be satisfied with that?
It's my understanding of the agreement, or at least the one that I was able to get my hands on, is for the section we're looking at doing the roadway, that we have ownership of it, and also in that agreement, that we agree to allow the railroad museum to make improvements, anything to better the site. But I'll definitely look into that more. I may have missed something that Councilwoman Folda is pointing out, and we can get a formal document signed by the state and the city saying, "We agree that this roadway can be constructed here," if that's the way it needs to be.
Because we do own the property.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And certainly, if the council wishes to get a formal easement right-of-way, that can happen while the design is going on. The design does not do the construction. The design is to design, to get it ready for potential construction. So, if the council wishes to have staff, you know, engage with the state to get a formal easement, you know, we can certainly do that during the design process. And I do want to make the distinction that this particular design project is actually being funded by...
RTC.
By RTC, and they also have agreed that, at least for now, that they would also fund the construction of this particular project as well.
Councilmember Hoskins, any questions on this item? Uh, hold on just one moment. I'll make sure your microphone is on. Go ahead, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was just going to say, I understand Councilwoman's fullness, interest in this. In order to construct it, we have to have a design, but we don't want to get a design if we can't construct it. So, if she doesn't feel comfortable, and we need more information, I think we should get that information in, hold it, and wait until we have what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would just say that, you know, I'm looking at the agreement here, and there's a section right at the very beginning called "Recitals." It seems to me that within a contract, that would be one of the recitals, that we actually have the right to do what we're doing. I do think that issuing a design contract, if there's any question regarding an easement, we very well may be throwing that design money away if we... uh, we, we very well may be throwing that design money away if we don't know that. So I, I, I know we can't cover every possible contingency within a contract, but when we do have a contract where it's known that there are potentially competing interests, say between the city of Boulder City, the state of Nevada, it does sound like, uh, Southern Pacific Railroad had given up their interest in the property and any agreement with the state and the Department of Museums. Uh, you know, potentially that could go into the recitals and just say, you know, we've already reached an agreement to work together on this project or we have a mutual agreement together, or whatever that agreement might be, uh, to state there is no potential conflict here. And again, I, I do understand that this is being funded by RTC. Uh, as a member of the RTC board, they rely on us to provide them information. They're not, you know, doing all the work for us. And again, I, I appreciate Councilmember Folda bringing this forward. As critical as I think this project is to the success of Boulder City, um, you know, there, there, as I recall, there was quite a holdup while it was worked out who did have rights to that land out there. So trying to get it right up front is, is a good idea as well. So again, I would, uh, I have no objections to this as it's, uh, written. So I will, uh, leave that up to Councilmember Folda. Do you wish to make a motion or not?
I do, sorry, I'm trying to think of how to say it. Um, so I make a motion to put this item in abance until, um, a written agreement can be provided with the two involved parties for the access agreement.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's unanimous then. It will be held in abance until that, uh, agreement is available. Thank you. All right, we will move now to item number eight, uh, for possible action on bill number 1869, amendment to Title 11, Chapter 8 of the city code. Uh, this is a public hearing and we have Community Development Director Michael Mays for a presentation on this.
Yeah.
Yes, again, what we're going to do, because the public is not allowed access to the city hall at this time, the city clerk is going to call the applicant for this change, uh, so that they can listen and respond if necessary. We will wait to get her on the line.
Hello?
Ms. Mongi. I'm sorry, this is, uh, City Clerk Lou Crum and your item is up in front of the council. Um, so we have you on the line to listen. Okay, just, uh, stand by and listen. And if you could just mute your phone until, um, until there are questions for you.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. In the city's RV zoning district, it limits the number of permanent structures to one for each park. Sonia Mongili owns a permanent structure in the Boulder Oaks RV Resort. It has previously served as an office for the park. She submitted an application seeking a text amendment that would permit two permanent structures in an RV park. Staff has provided in attachment two of your staff report, which is, uh, page 208 of your packet, the proposed changes to Chapter 11, 8 of the city code. Planning Commission heard the request on February 19th and recommended seven to zero in support of the text amendment. So for your consideration this evening is bill number 1869. And as you consider the applicant's request, I just want to note, um, besides the mayor already mentioning the, uh, public hearing, uh, for your consideration, that when it comes to the council's deliberation and ultimate determination, whether to support the text amendment or to deny it, that it should be based on findings, um, that are contained in Section 2 of the bill. So you would amend those findings appropriately, uh, with that recommendation. In other words, and part of what the findings say is that does the proposed amendment promote the health, safety morals and general welfare of the city? Which in other words, is the proposed text amendment compatible with other uses permitted in the zoning district? And so, uh, before, um, the applicant, um, has an opportunity to speak to you, um, do you have any questions for staff?
Questions from council regarding, uh, this text amendment? Councilmember Adams?
Um, just to clarify, I know we went over this in our briefings, uh, last week, but, um, even if we were to approve of this, uh, ultimately the, uh, the use of, of this property would be up to the HOA that, uh, presides over the, this, this area of land, is that, this zone, is that correct?
Correct.
So even if we were to start to, if we were to, to make this action, it, it really doesn't do anything other than, and again, this isn't for all of the residents, this is to affect each of the, the RV parks within our neighborhood. I know that it is a little bit different depending on the setup and makeup of those parks. Um, but, you know, I just want to be clear that this is, uh, zoning change, a text amendment, not for one particular issue or one particular place, but in general across the board. So I just wanted to make that clear for, uh, everyone's general information.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Councilmember Hoskins?
I've been, nothing. I'm getting feedback from something, and I, you don't hear me.
All right. Thank you. Um, you know, I have a question along the lines of Councilmember Adams as well on this. Uh, when we talk about the, uh, the findings that we are to look to, promotes the health, safety morals or general welfare of the city, uh, and adopted in accordance with or compliance with the master plan, uh, this is actually affecting a zoning classification, uh, which would then allow an applicant to go to the planning commission and request a conditional use? Or does this simply become part of that zoning classification?
In this case, it would be part of the zoning classification.
Okay, so no further action would be needed by, uh, anyone in an RV park or the RV park collectively? Uh, the management of an RV park or if it's an HOA that owns the park? Uh, once, if this were to pass, uh, they could then simply make a determination whether they wanted, uh, one or two residences within the park, is that?
Well, no, obviously HOA, uh, covenants and conditions would apply. This is just the zoning district.
But again, I, I know that, uh, and I had listened to the planning commission meeting, HOA's, uh, CCNRs, that relates to a particular park. It doesn't have any impact on what the state or the city's zoning classifications are. Uh, they can write what they want, but when we establish a, a zoning classification and the uses within that particular zoning classification, uh, it's not dependent on, nor should it be dependent on, anything that that HOA may decide to do, uh, in the future.
That is correct. It sends, that's a private, uh, agreement with a specific part. And I guess to reemphasize for the public's benefit with respect to this proposed text amendment, as well as the other two that you're going to be considering tonight, it's not what is specifically being asked of a particular location. What you're evaluating is the appropriateness of the applicant's request to modify that zoning district. And does their request work for the zoning district? Not just a particular property, not just a particular development, but the entire zoning district. So, uh, for example, um, RV parks within our community, there are two existing RV parks and there is an additional property owned by the city that is zoned, RV park. And so with the council's consideration, it would impact the entire zoning district.
Thank you. All right, uh, with that then, uh, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, if there's any statement that the applicant would make, like to make during the public hearing, uh, she may do so at this time.
Ms. Mongili, did you want to say something?
Do we know if she's still on the line?
She might have her phone muted.
Again, the issue is we're going to
Hello?
You, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sonia Mongili. I'm the owner of the lot 276A of the RV, the Boulder Oaks RV Park. And, uh, the reason I, I would like to say a lot of things, but I really wouldn't know what to add more than what I had said during the meeting with the planning commission. I feel like I am at the, at the end of the rope with applying for, uh, with the city of Boulder City. Because when I bought the building, commercial building, I thought that I had the right to be able to open a RV-related, uh, uh, business within the RV park. Apparently it's not the case, so what I bought is basically smoke. The, um, Board of Directors do not seem to be opposed to the building to become residential because it is my understanding that, that they would much rather to see someone living there than having a RV-related, uh, park, commercial of some sort. What I had proposed was a mini-market for the RV park, mini-market coffee shop, which actually this time, at this time would have been a great asset for the RV park, but this is just, you know, my, uh, personal note. They did not want that, they preferred to have a residential and so I applied for the variance. And thank you for listening and I hope you understood. I know I have an accent, but I'm open to discussion.
Thank you.
Um, Thank you.
At, at this point unfortunately, we're going to have to end the phone call with the applicant so that we can open the phone line for other members of the public?
I can, uh, conference it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
If there are any other members of the public that would like to make a comment on this, uh, they can call in now, area code 702-589-9629. Again, this period is a public hearing on the request to amend the zoning classification for RV parks. Anyone wishing to speak on that matter may call 702-589-9629 at this time. All right, hearing no one, uh, for the public comment, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Uh, and bring it back to council for discussion. Any questions, comments, discussion by council? Councilmember Adams?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, certainly this is a, a bit of an interesting one. Um, it, it's not necessarily how I, uh, foresee
I'm very, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Public hearing?
Yes, I'm a resident of Boulder City, John Hartig.
Okay, before you proceed, sir, I
I'm calling about this change to the RV zoning.
Yes, before you proceed, sir, let me just reopen the public hearing then. Again, because of the technical issues that we have, uh, under the directives for the pandemic, I know that there is a delay and sometimes the public doesn't, uh, get the notifications of when things are happening here. So in consideration of those technical issues, we will go ahead and reopen the public hearing on this.
All right, so I'll just hang on.
You can go ahead now, sir, thank you.
All right, this is, uh, John Hartig and I'm a resident of Boulder City. Um, and I fully support this change in the zoning code to allow the two dwelling units on the RV park, the permanent dwelling units. And that's all we have to offer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and again, we will give it a little bit longer here. Uh, I know it is a challenge for all of us with the way that, uh, we've had to make changes in how we conduct our meetings. So we will give it a little bit longer. The phone number again, if anyone does wish to make a comment during the public hearing, Again, anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing, please call 702-589-9629. All right, this time, again, we will close the public hearing and bring it to council for discussion on the item. Anyone wishing to discuss the matter? I believe councilmember Adams had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, like I was saying, is this, this obviously is a little bit of an odd situation. You know, I'm, you know, having, as we've already discussed, you know, reminding myself that this is in, overall, we're talking about a zoning change. You know, personally, I don't see that this negatively impacts the city as a whole. You know, when we're looking at these findings, you know, B for me, that the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety morals, or the general welfare of the city. I do see the general welfare in the sense that it does look like there is a need for some flexibility, at least from, from one of the RV parks that is within this zone. And with regards to, A, the general conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan for the city, you know, I, nothing, nothing cries out to me when I go through the master plan that says this is inappropriate use, you know. But at the same time, you know, we start to say, okay, two, two residences, okay, so then three, why not three, why not four? Now, I don't necessarily see that being an issue, being that there aren't those buildings there, so I don't see that, that coming forth. And so that's why I'm, I'm a little bit more comfortable with it in that this is, is more addressing, more about flexibility, I think, with regards to some of the, the needs. I'm all ears, so I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, exactly, this is an interesting one, but I don't see any, any real danger or, or threat to the general well-being of the city or RV parks if this change were to be made, so. But as always, I'm open to hear the other comments and the conversation with the rest of council.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. This question's for community director Michael Mays. Is there anything that is prohibiting, is there any codes or zoning issues that would re, that is prohibiting the applicant from providing a convenient store on the property? In other words, do RV parks allow for convenient stores supplement to their RV zone?
Yes. The code-
Allows for certain supportive uses to an RV park, a convenience store would be one of those.
Okay, so for, it's not the cities who's saying that the applicant cannot use their building for the purpose that they had designed?
Well, it's, oh, for the purpose of the design, it was originally the office, and yes, that is something that is currently allowed within the zoning.
Okay, and then this, I know that we're talking all over in zoning, but the history of this zoning with as far as caretaker residents, there is a history that originally there was just one caretaker, and it was a caretaker that had to do with management of the property. And in time, there was a change in that requirement that a manager was in the residence of the property. Do you have the history on that a little bit?
Sure. So the other residence that is at this RV park was being used by the owners that had purchased the RV park back in approximately 2002. And one of their roles was to rent out lots. And because of litigation between the homeowners association and that owner, they were not able to move forward with that. And so they came to the city and asked for a text amendment to permit the one residence within the RV park, and that was approved.
Thank you. So for, as far as discussion, you know, I just, I really feel like we're kind of getting into an HOA dispute and that, you know, the meaning for, the purpose of an RV zone is to have a recreational use that's temporary and that the only reason that a permanent resident was allowed on there was to be the person who stays at the property to manage it. At some point, because of litigation, that went away, and now someone can live there without, you know, having the requirement of being a manager. So now we're getting to have, having two residents on a property of an RV zone that are not managing the property and they're permanent residents at this time. So I just, I, I'm concerned with what happens down the road as those residences are bought and sold in relation with the HOA. And I feel like the city is kind of getting in between the HOA disputing with, with their property and, and just the future of what would happen to future residents down there and how the HOA is controlling, which they have the right to, that area. But I feel like this is kind of leaning towards changing or amending for one purpose, which is kind of what was, in my opinion, was done earlier. I'm just not comfortable, and I wouldn't support making two permanent residences on RVs own. That, that don't have anything to do with managing that zone.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of looking at, first, the HOA had prevented her from using that building as a convenience store coffee shop just for the purposes of serving that population. They, she now has this building, the, even though this does apply to both RV parks, there is an odd nature of that particular RV park that this is, that this actually relates to. And that is that most of the people that live there are really quasi-permanent residents, that they have to leave for a certain amount of time and then they come back. And I know one person wrote me and said they were opposed because that would affect property values and the, it, what it is, is it would bring two permanent residents into an environment that already has quasi-permanent residents. And my only, I think, I, I support the idea. The only concern I would have is putting, I know the previous caretaker residence said in existence prior to July 1, 2015. So there wouldn't be the, the decision, for example, in the other one to say, oh, now we can start, we can build a second one. Does that make sense that? I, I know the date was taken out of that, that first issue, so they would, I could see that in, inasmuch as there are people who live there most of the time to have two residences where people who live there most of the time would, would fit that. And the other one already has one permanent residence, correct? The other RV park has any, has a permanent structure?
There are permanent structures, but not a-
But they don't have a, but if you put a date in existence prior to July 1, 2015, even though this says it's a draft alternative language for both RV parks, it would really just apply to those two particular buildings.
Correct, and certainly the council can amend the text amendment as you see fit.
Yeah, I, I would like, if there is a motion to do that, to amend that to include the inexistence prior to July 1, 2015. And I, and I also say, think that this proposed amendment does promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the city. To me, to have two people, to have people living in those two residents who have that ownership of those two residents is good for Boulder City.
Councilmember Hoskins, any questions or comments?
Hold on. Go ahead. Okay, I'm in favor of the terms of two permanent residents. We approved one before. This RV park is unique, as we've said. They, everyone owns their own pad or property that they have their RV located, and I'm sure they own their RV. So, and they're there almost 365 days a year, although they can be gone, it's supposed to be 180, they can be gone for a day and come back. So I don't see any, I have no opposition with this. I, I can see that I think it, it should happen, and I don't think that it would affect any of the welfare of the city. And I think it could be appropriate for the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would just like to clarify again my view of zoning classifications. When changes to those classifications are made, it should not be with regard to any individual property. It should be in regard to what we want to see in that classification within this community. And if it happens to benefit an existing park, you know, that's one thing. We may come across an issue at some point that could harm or, or cause something to happen in a, in an RV park that would not be desired. That's unusual for zoning classification changes, but we don't know what could happen in the future that might come up. So this discussion about this park, or that residence, or that building, or that existence, I, I find a, a real problem with putting anything in that terms. And quite honestly, I'm not certain what councilmember Bridges was referring to about changing dates or anything like that. I think when we look at these classifications, when I look at something like this, to say, you know, would it be in the interest of the community to have two residences within an RV park? I can see where that would be beneficial, where we would, that would allow for two caretakers. Again, we often think of caretakers as living there 24/7, 365, but that may not always be the case. I would certainly be hesitant to go more than two because we're not talking about a housing project, we're talking about an RV park. So two permanent residences, I do believe fits that conditions, that it is for the general welfare of the community, where you could potentially have two caretakers so that one would always be present at a park. As far as how that fits in with the HOA rules at this park, what their CCNRs say, that should have nothing to do with our discussion. The, the current configuration, the current financial issues, again, once again, that's not an issue that we should be looking at for zoning classifications, it's what's appropriate for a given classification. So in this particular case, I have no issue with two, I would not go beyond two. I'm not basing that on the fact that there might be a building there that was intended originally to be a store, and for whatever reason, it never became a store, or how they run their park. I can also foresee that a park who has no residences, or maybe one residence, may say, oh, I get to build another one. Well, they're still subject to all the other codes that are in place, setbacks, all of that. Making this change doesn't guarantee that any park can automatically put a second permanent residence in. So once again, I think we have to look at this, what's appropriate for the classification and not a particular person's situation. I do understand the applicant brought this forward because they have a particular situation, but the judgment, I believe, has to be based on what that classification should be used for and what should be allowed within it. So I do support making this change. As far as the other reasons go, I, I think we run a real danger when we attempt to customize zoning classifications for particular uses. There are other ways to approach that rather than changing zoning classifications. So at this point, any other further discussions or questions? Councilmember Folda?
Is that, Mayor, I was trying to look up one thing that maybe Michael Mays could answer this question. I believe that there was a non-permanent use for assistant manager in an RV zone. Is that correct? Would you know that offhand?
Non-
Permanent, so if there was a secondary manager, that there would be allowed for either like a mobile home structure on the, on the RV zone?
To address consistency with the different types of RV parks that we have in the community, that's where the proposed language says the two caretaker residences for that type of park, which could be RVs or two permanent structures. So that's how it's addressing it. But the intent is to show the ability to have two caretakers for an individual park.
Sorry, I thought that, not with the new amendment, but I was, I was just questioning if currently in our, in our code that it provides for that.
If you look at page 208, it shows the redlined version and what is, blacklined is the prior language. So if you look at 1184B, and it refers to the caretaker residence, the existing code says one caretaker residence is permitted. And then it also talks about, under 1184B2, that one residence permanently constructed dwelling unit is permitted, and that's where the reference was to inexistence prior to July 1, 2015. So what's being proposed is to allow either two caretaker residences or to have two permanent structures within an RV park.
Okay, so I guess, thank you for clarifying that amendment. I was, under 1186, this is what I was, I guess, thinking of in my mind, was the occupancy limitation, that there's an exception, under A2, there's an exception to the occupancy limitation for one assistant manager, meaning if there was an assistant manager in addition to a manager, that they wouldn't have to abide by the occupancy rules, that they could be a permanent resident?
I think it's recognizing that potential, yes, correct.
Okay, so currently, the, under that, there would be a way for a second long-term living space for an assistant manager?
Under that current provision, yes.
So we're not really changing that, although we're clarifying it, we are changing that in this, okay, thank you.
Correct. And I, I'd just like to clarify too, that, you know, the language here is changing about whether there's actually a manager, the residence is for a manager. I, I don't believe that we want that in a zoning classification where the city would be responsible for policing what the functions of a person in one of these permanent residences would be doing. be doing. I think it's sufficient to say they're allowed up to two permanent residences, and how those are chosen to be done, that is up to the HOA, that is up to how they want to write their CCNRs, if that HOA has that ability. But, once again, the HOAs have nothing to do with what we are doing, and just because if this were to pass, that doesn't force that HOA to make changes. They may, or they may not, depending on how their association is arranged, but we're not telling them what to do. We're just saying that within an RV park classifications, it's appropriate to have up to two permanent residences. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
No.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion then on this?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept bill number 1869.
I believe at this time we need to refer to the ordinance or to the bill.
I think the bill is approved with the findings, please.
Oh, approved with the findings, yes, with the findings, 11339A MB.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, four to one on that for passage. And with that, we will move to number nine. Again, this is a public hearing, amendment of Title 8, Chapter, excuse me, Title 11, Chapter 8 of the city code to allow permanent accessory buildings within the RV zone. And again, Mr. Mays? And the city clerk will be contacting the applicant to get them on the line in case there's a need for any questions.
Hello?
Ms. Hoffman?
Yeah.
Hi, this is the county clerk, your item is up.
Okay, let me turn my computer down.
Yes, if you could just mute your phone until...
Oh, okay.
All right? Can you hear us? Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays, thank you.
Mayor, as you noted, this is another text amendment to the RV zoning district. The city's RV zoning district does not permit accessory structures. That would include sheds, gazebos, and pergolas. Several of these structures have been built in the Boulder Oaks RV Resort. Unlike other RV parks, Boulder Oaks has individually owned lots and is governed by a community association. The Boulder Oaks Community Association has submitted an application seeking a text amendment that would permit permanent accessory structures in the city's RV zoning district. Staff has provided in attachment two of the staff report, which is page 237 of your packet, the proposed changes to Chapter 118 of the city code noted and read. The planning commission heard this request on February 19th and recommended four to three in support of the text amendment with subsequent amendments. So, again, looking at page 237, those sections that are underlined are the additional changes per the planning commission's recommendation. So for your consideration this evening, is bill number 1870, again with the public hearing and the need that, whether you're approving this bill or denying this bill, that you include those findings. Do you have any questions of staff before we would have the applicant speak?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins, go ahead, please. Hold on just one moment. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mays, correct me if I make a mistake here, but I understand they did not have permission for the first structure. Now we are trying to approve permission for two structures? Is that correct?
That was the prior text amendment that was being considered. That was the prior text amendment that was being considered. This one is with respect to accessory structures, sheds, gazebos, there are multiple different types of accessory structures that are allowed in other zoning districts within our zoning code, but they are not currently allowed in the RV zoning district.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Adams?
I'll just make a comment. You know, this one, this one, I'm definitely a little bit more hesitant to, basically, you know, again, this is, this is for all, this is for the zoning. This isn't about...
Councilman Adams, I think we may want to go forward with the public hearing before we get into...
Absolutely.
...the discussion of the merits.
Please do.
And also, if the applicant would like to make a statement, now would be the time to do that.
Hello?
Okay, were you on mute?
I was on mute, I'm off now.
Okay, would you like to make a statement?
Sure, definitely. Let me give you just a little bit of history of why we're looking into this. When Boulder Oaks RV community was first started back in the 90s, we were automatically put in this RV recreational zone. However, like we've kind of said, we're kind of a unique animal out here, we're not a typical RV park by any means. We own all our lots in here, we don't have a manager, we don't have anybody in here, it is run by the homeowners' association. And there's no buying or selling of property that's done by the homeowners' association, there's no renting of property at all. That being said, this particular RV park has only owners that own their property in here. As is true in many other RV resorts across the country, because I personally, my husband and I personally owned RV lots in Florida, we owned them in Wyoming as well, and in all of, both of those types of owner-owned lots, we were allowed to put sheds on there, we were allowed to put pergolas, we were allowed to use our property that we had purchased. The way this zoning is set up is, it was done, I don't know, back in the 70s or 80s, so we're talking 35 to 50 years ago, that this community was, or this, this RV park that we're in was automatically thrown into that particular zone, and like everything, times have changed a lot. The RV lifestyle is so much more different than it was back when this RV zone was put together. And like I say, this is what people do now, you see more and more of these RV communities that develop like this, and it's helping to enhance Boulder City dramatically because this is an owner-owned park. In that same light, we, the owners, want to continue upgrading our property here, as well as upgrading Boulder City. I don't know, you're probably not aware, but what the value of this property is right now. Last year, the average price of a property was around, a lot sold for $63,000. I'm sorry, that was in 2018. In 2019, it went up to $72,000. So our property values are raising, and that, one of the reasons is because we are doing things to make our lots much, much nicer, and it doesn't matter whether a person is in this, on their lot, three months out of the year, six months out of the year, it doesn't matter. And we do have a lot of people that come and go, and they never rent their lot, they just have it for them to use. But the types of structures we're trying to put in here only enhances the quality of life for everyone here. As you know, some of us have to stay here during the hot summer months, and it's really, really nice if we can get some shelter from the shade with a pergola, gazebo, places to store things. And that doesn't mean we still can't take our RV out and go whenever we want to, because the structures that we want are in no way attached to an RV, that RV can be moved in and out very, very easily, and another one slid in. Again, with RV life, it's quite a movable group, and we frequently change the RVs we have. So we would never want to have something where we couldn't pull it out easily if we needed to. But that's the nice part with this, and we would just really appreciate it, yes, like he said, there have been sheds put in here, didn't know they weren't really supposed to, I guess, because this was done, many, many years ago, they started doing this. And so now we just want to enhance the property a lot more, and when this came out, we found out, we had put some new things, and again, we have an A&amp;L committee, an architectural landscape committee, and I don't know how familiar you are at all with our association, but we do a lot of things to make sure, where it's guarded very carefully, the board writes strict rules, and we want to maintain our property and enhance, again, not only the quality of life for us, but also Boulder City. So when this came out a few months ago that we had changed, and the city contacted us and let us know, we met with the staff of the city there, and their recommendation was to do this amendment, thought it would be a good thing for us to do, so that we can move forward, not only that, get the permitting that we need to do to make these changes and move forward. And incidentally, there was a misstatement made earlier this evening regarding our process. We have not violated city permitting, we don't have anything right now that violates that. There were some that said sheds were bigger than what the city allowed, this is not true at all. We've been very careful, our architectural and landscaping committee has been very, very careful not to allow that, as well as the board of directors here. So we want to work in conjunction with the city, we want to do the permitting requirements that we need to do, and we just want to continue to enhance our community as much as possible. Basically, the things that are proposed in here are very specific, and again, with our architectural and landscaping guidelines, the things that are in the amendment that is being proposed duplicates the things that we have in our architectural and landscaping guidelines, and we just want to move forward and work with the city and continue to beautify this park. That's basically what we're looking to do.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this. This is the public hearing portion of agenda item number nine, consideration of change for allowing permanent accessory buildings.
Public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to make a public comment.
Go ahead.
All right, this is Judy DeShane calling. I can understand the need for sheds and pergolas and this type of thing, and I can understand those owners. My problem is, I do not believe that...
This is the public hearing portion of...
I do not believe the text amendment should have 200 feet in it, it should be 120, because that's what everybody else in the city is required to, or limited to, until, without getting a permit. So I think whatever you put in this text amendment has to reflect what the rest of the residents in Boulder City are held to, being able to get without a permit, and we know if we go beyond that, we need to get a permit. If we don't get the permit, we're subject to penalties and having to tear it out. And so that's why I think this text amendment has to have the same type of restrictions as what the rest of us have. Thank you.
Public hearing for agenda item number nine, a possible change to allow permanent accessory buildings in the RV park designation. This is the public hearing for item number nine, a possible revision of Title 11, Chapter All right, hearing no others, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion. Councilmember Adams, you had had a comment?
Yes, thank you, I apologize for jumping the gun a little bit early there. As I was saying earlier, you know, with this text amendment, I am a little bit more hesitant, just in the overall nature. Again, you know, this isn't about this one particular RV park. about this one particular RV park. Um, you know, I appreciate that, uh, that they have, you know, they are very dedicated to maintaining and making sure that everything is nice, and I don't doubt that intention. However, you know, this, these types of agreements, you know, apply again to everybody. Um, and so while one, uh, park may say, uh, we have these things set in standard, so you know that we'll, we'll do a good job. Um, we don't, that's not necessarily, uh, agreed upon with everybody, or particularly if, if things do change over time. Uh, you know, and this isn't, again, to cast aspersions on any other parks or what, or what they do. Um, but I, I do start to get a, a little bit more hesitant. I do realize in kind of looking up, you know, what RV parks look like these days, um, a- as the applicant said, the, the RV lifestyle, or whatever you'd like to call it, is changing. It, it is different than what it, it looked like, uh, decades ago, um, when these things were, were brought up originally. Um, you know, things like shade structures, it is a hot, it is hot out here during the summer, um, but people still like to be able to get that fresh air and not be cooped up all side, all, you know, inside all day. I think we all know that feeling, especially right now. Um, and it would be good to have, be able to have that relief. Um, so I, I am very torn on this, because, uh, I can see where this could be a, a good benefit, uh, but I could also see where this, uh, is not, where it actually is, uh, I don't want to say abused, but i- is kind of just, you know, while we have, you know, uh, sizes here put into place, I, I am concerned that, you know, that can start to look like anything that, that they deem, uh, looks, you know, whatever that is, what, whatever that might look like. Um, you know, if, if in general, we need to kind of reevaluate what our RV parks look like in general as a whole, uh, maybe that's a discussion we need to have because of all of the changes in the way that, that people are using, uh, RV parks and what they expect out of it from a city. Um, so with this one, I, I am very torn, because, you know, it's not, you know, again, I can see the benefit. I can see where this can be good, where this can benefit, uh, the parks, but I can also see where this, this may run afoul of what our intentions and what we are trying to do, uh, wi- with this zoning.
Thank you. Any others? Council member Bridges?
Um, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Um, does, uh, having a, uh, storage shed greater than a hundred and twenty feet, in this situation, does this preclude having to have a permit to build it?
So the city code says that, um, a storage shed that is larger than a hundred and twenty feet, square feet, requires a building permit.
Okay.
But even smaller accessory structures have to be submitted to our department to evaluate total lot coverage. Because how our code is set up is that, based on the zoning district, uh, there is a certain square footage permitted for all accessory structures within that, on that lot. So, and it's usually progressive, so, um, smaller zoning lot districts, um, that have only seven thousand square feet maximum, it permits seven hundred square feet of total accessory structure, square feet. Can be multiple access- accessory structures, but that's the total. And so, um, and back to the other point of accessory structures that are out there at the RV park today, they are not permitted, regardless of whether they're over a hundred and twenty square feet or not, because the zoning doesn't allow for those accessory structures in the RV zone. Now, if there is, uh, an accessory structure that is over a hundred and twenty square feet, then it also needs to get a building permit.
So if, so there are already structures that are a hundred and twenties, a hundred and nineteen square feet, let, let's say, um, that wouldn't need to be permitted if they were allowed to be there, but there are ones there that shouldn't be there at all. But they're there anyway.
This is the distinction between the building code and the zoning code. So-
Okay.
Building code requires anything over a hundred and twenty square feet obtaining a building permit. But the zoning, it doesn't matter what the size is, they're not permitted.
They're not, they're not permitted. Uh, what are the size of these lots?
The average lot is about two thousand square feet, and that's where staff came up with the, uh, two hundred square foot maximum as the proposed text amendment. The assumption being, looking at other zoning districts and the proportion of the lot that can be covered by accessory structures, which is around ten percent.
Okay, so this, uh, new draft language, um, page two thirty-two says they could have two, two hundred square foot structures.
No, no.
No?
Maximum area, well, per accessory structure-
Structure.
Yeah, two hundred square feet.
Feet, that's per, and if, and then-
Maximum of two, yes.
Yeah.
But the additional language says that, um, you can only have one shed and, uh, the maximum of one pergola. The planning commission was not supportive of allowing, for example, two sheds.
A she shed and a he shed. Um, okay, so one, one shed and one pergola and a pergola, or gazebo being something with a top and a bottom and some supporting structure, but, but not walls.
Correct. And again, this is subject to council's amendment.
Okay. That's it for right now, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
You can see me making up wheels turning. Okay, um, so just one more clarification point on that term then. Um, um, under the proposed language, um, is it typical to refer to the building code when, um, in a zoning code? Just the language of, you know, as permitted by, um, Boulder City building codes? Is that, um, is that usual, or could, could we add that to the language to refer to, so that it's not, um, read as that these are allowed, period? That's all I have to do, but that, there's the building code is also involved in, um, maintaining and, um, what size and what can, with setbacks and all those things that would be required?
It's inherently, um, part of the total code, so, um, anything that, uh, is being proposed has to meet both the zoning and the building code. Now, again, with the example of sheds under a hundred and twenty square feet, doesn't require a building permit. But there are other provisions that may apply with the building code that, um, we would need to evaluate, uh, for compliance. One of those is fire ratings. So in our, uh, code, we have, uh, distances between property lines and the accessory structure, and it is dependent upon, uh, the fire rating of that structure. So the two codes are always evaluated when being considered for any, uh, proposed improvements, even if a building permit is not required.
Okay. So because of, um, the proposed language does have setbacks per building code requirements, but would it be structures, um, per building code requirement, you know, as applicable to building code? Could we amend that to make it refer to our building code if it was necessary? Not in specific terms, but just in general, so that, that they're aware that this zone, you know, is also applicable to, the, the building code is still applicable?
Council member Hoskins, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
She answered negatively to that. Um, you know, I, I'm usually out in that park about once a week. Um, I certainly see how well-maintained, uh, the park in general is, and the individual lots are. Uh, we're talking about an amendment here, though, to chapter, uh, excuse me, uh, Title XI, Chapter Eight of the, uh, code, and this would create Section D of that particular section. And when I look at A, it says, uh, permitted use, well, eight, uh, eleven dash eight dash four says permitted uses recreational vehicles for short-term living purposes. Okay, so this park doesn't fall into that category. Uh, many of these residences, if they're not permanent, they're certainly long-term and not short-term, uh, residences. There had been a requirement on this park, um, that, uh, the RV, uh, could only be there for a certain period of time, and then had to be moved, uh, before it could be returned. However, the period of time that it had to be off the lot, uh, my understanding was that was not defined. And therefore, it could be that you drove it around the block and put it back in place, and that satisfied whatever that requirement was. When I, again, go back to what zoning classifications are about, and I look at the desires of the folks that own these lots out there in that park, um, they no longer want an RV park. Uh, that's not what they're looking for. And to be honest with you, I don't know if they're, the, I, I don't know of any traditional zoning classification that would fit that. But when I hear the type of questions they have or desires that they have, you know, I'm reminded of a movement that's around right now called tiny houses, where you have very small lots, you have very small homes, uh, but they are homes. Uh, you know, Boulder City started out, uh, many of the workers here lived in six hundred square foot homes. Now, you're saying that, uh, that number is close to what the entire lot size is for, uh, this particular park. Was that correct? No, you said two thousand square feet, I'm sorry. So we're talking about very small lots. Uh, I know some of the lots in, in the Old Town, I don't know of any that are in that size range, but certainly in the four, five thousand square foot, uh, range, there are those. So i- it's not an unusual thing for Boulder City, but my issue is, if we look at RV parks, and again, we're not looking at this particular park, I understand it's a request from this park, but this applies to all RV parks. So I really think that if there's a desire to do something like this, uh, it needs to be thought through as a new classification. Because as I look at this, the different uses that are provided for in this particular classification, uh, it, it does not fit the uses that are out there at that park. The, the construction of permanent residences itself kind of goes aga- or, excuse me, permanent structures kind of goes against, uh, what an RV park is for. What it's supposed to be for is just what it says, uh, short-term living purposes. Someone brings in, it might be a fifth wheel, it might be an RV, uh, they pull into the lot, they may hook up to temporary utilities, they're there for a period of time, and then they're moving on. Well, that's not the case in this instance. Uh, I know in several of those, uh, there are staircases, uh, porches that are built right to the home. They may not be attached to the home, but they are built right to the home. So I, I don't, I, I just don't see us going further down the path with this particular zoning classification to move it even further away from what an RV park is, uh, historically defined as. So I just don't think this is the right solution. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say that I, I concur with you, mayor, that I, I think that that is kind of at the heart, that they are looking for something different than, than, than this. Uh, it, it's not that, that they don't want this in particular, but this isn't, this doesn't really, they don't fit a, a lot of what this, uh, current zoning does. So I do agree with you on that.
Council member Bridges?
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, and I don't know if I asked this question before. Um, the mayor mentioned that there currently is no zone that sort of matches, matches up with what it is they're doing here. Um, it certainly sounds like, ideally, they'd love to have, uh, something along the lines of a permanent, um, mobile home park as opposed to an RV park. You know, and if you're, if you own the, and they own the land and they own the, the, the unit on it, and the only difference is the unit has wheels. But I'm also assuming there's a different tax relationship, uh, in terms of property taxes and so on. What is the process to change that? If, if the people who live there decided, hey, we, we'd like to turn this into some sort of hybrid mobile home park, what did they have to do to do that?
Well, part of the challenge is first, um, what would be the zoning? And as you mentioned, uh, councilwoman Bridges, is that there isn't exactly a zoning district that would fit what they are, with the exception of the fact that they are RVs. RVs are defined in our zoning code, and, um, they fit the RV definition, um, that is in our zoning code. Certainly, you could consider a zoning district like our mobile home parks, but then that would allow mobile home parks within that development as well, where it's currently not permitted. So how do you make the distinction between, um, an RV and an RV, but one RV's on an individual lot and the other is in a larger park? So that's part of the challenge. But the process would be, um, submitting an application requesting rezoning. It would also require an application for a text amendment to create a new zoning district that doesn't exist today.
Okay. So it's easy.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't get, uh, too run away with that, because there are things, sanitation considerations of how these get hooked up to utilities, the infrastructure that's already in the park. So to say, oh, well, you know, this will be simple-
No.
Um, I don't know that it is, because the park was constructed for one purpose, and it's being used for a different purpose. So I, I wouldn't want to leave the impression with anyone that, oh, this will be taken care of in, in like forty-eight hours. Um, uh, I, I think this would, it require a great deal of consideration as far as what type of developments we want to, uh, provide for here in Boulder City. So I, I, I just wouldn't want to leave that impression that, uh, this would be a simple matter that would be easily disposed of. Anyone else? Council member Folder?
I just want to add to that conversation, rezoning, um, you know, you can't make permanent something that has wheels. And that, and I think that's the biggest issue. Um, if, and even if it were to change to something where it allowed mobile homes, then you have another issue of setbacks, um, the growth ordinance, because they bypassed that in building the RV park. Um, so there's a lot of other considerations that you would kind of tumble into. And so, yes, I, I think the way that this was developed originally, um, unfortunately, with individual lots, um, created an atmosphere for the, the owners of those lots to want to have the same, um, rights that a permanent resident would have, yet, um, they bypass the things that would give them the permanent residency, such as the growth ordinance and, um, the zoning, the, sorry, the, um, lot sizes and things like that, that would allow for, um, the permanency structures and things that they're requesting.
Anyone else?
No, I, just, I apologize for the levity. I understand that there is a, it's a complicated process, and, uh, everybody has made, um, comments in terms of, this is, this is a RV park, um, and, and we don't have a hybrid, uh, entity that this fits in. It had, they have wheels, and they're required to go away and come back. And I, I think it's unfortunate that there's the confusion that, gee, we're here three hundred and fifty days a year, why can't we put these structures here? And, um, yet that begins to ask the question, what about the setbacks? What about all of the things that somebody who has a permanent home has to deal with in order to build these, these elements on their property? So that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
I have no comment, thank you.
All right, is there anyone wishing to make a motion on this? I'll poll again. Councilmember Fuldow?
A point and order question, if there's no motion, is the item fail?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No motion for me.
Councilmember Bridges?
No motion.
Councilmember Adams?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Hoskins?
No motion.
Okay, I also do not wish to make a motion, so this item fails due to a lack of motion. Thank you, Mr. Mays. We'll now move on to item number 10. Public hearing for possible action to amend Title 11, Chapter 10 of City Code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries, and columbria in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone.
Hi, Mr. Smith, this is Lou Crum, the city clerk. The council's ready to hear your item now. If you could just mute your phone and stand by, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mays?
Thank you, Mayor. The city's Z1, Z1, C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district does not permit funeral home uses. Mr. Smith has submitted an application seeking a text amendment that would permit funeral homes in the city's C1 zoning district as a conditional use. Along with Mr. Smith's request, staff has also prepared amendments that clarify and provide consistency with the following related uses: cemeteries, mausoleums, and columbariums. The two tables provided on page 260 of your packet show where each of these uses is currently allowed and the proposed changes. Staff has also provided in Attachment 2 of your staff report, starting on page 264 of your packet, the proposed changes, the Title 11 of the City Code in red. The planning commission heard this request on February 19th and recommended seven to zero in support of the proposed text amendment. For your consideration this evening is Bill 1871. Again, there's a required public hearing and findings with respect to any motion by the council. The other thing that we wanted to highlight is that even if the city council were to approve the applicant's text amendment request, any subsequent consideration for a particular location in the C1 zoning district would require submission of a conditional use application, notification of property owners within 500 feet, and a public hearing before the planning commission. And so, this goes back to what the mayor spoke on earlier regarding each of these text amendments. You're looking at not a individual property this evening, you're looking at the merits of the appropriateness of the change in uses for the C1. Do you have any questions for staff?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I did have one in particular, that he had requested in terms of columbarium and funeral home, mortuary, but not a mausoleum. And I was wondering whether those two could be separated because there's, at least in my mind, the difference between urns and caskets. And I'm assuming that the columbaria is niches in the wall for urns, whereas the mausoleums are actual caskets that are, instead of buried, they're installed, so to speak.
Correct, and just like the other text amendments, the city council can amend them as you see fit.
As you see fit. Okay, also, currently, cemeteries and columbaria and mausoleums are conditional use in R1, R2, R3, and C1, C2, CM, as on page 260. The only difference is that funeral homes and mortuaries are not. Correct, and those are only in C2 and commercial manufacturing.
Correct.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, clarification on the definitions of the types of uses of these different buildings. As far as cremations or preparation, preparing the body, things like that, are those performed in funeral homes, mortuaries? You know, I know that the state designates, you know, what types of businesses are allowed to do what types of things. Could you help clarify that for me on that definition?
Yeah, cremation would not be permitted under any of these uses. That would be a separate use that's not permitted within the city's zoning code.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Full, or Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes. Could Mr. Smith have applied for a variance instead of changing the condition for the C1?
No, the city doesn't allow for use variations. It requires either rezoning or a text amendment.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fuldow?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the, we only have one, okay, so Palm, Boulder City, Mausoleum, they are in a R1 zone, correct? However, the R1 zone is directly next to our Boulder City Cemetery, which is a GM.
Correct.
Okay, so, sorry, I know we can't talk at the same time. Okay, so, but because it's in R1, then it also allows R2, R3. When a conditional use is allowed in R1, it's also allowed in R2 and R3. Correct.
With the, yeah, there are provisions within our codes that talk about when this use is a permitted or conditional use in this district, then it's a permitted or conditional use in the subsequent district.
Okay, so now, we have a conditional use in C2, and we're trying, we're talking about moving it the other way to C1. So, anything allowed in C1 would then allow, be allowed in C2, which we do have current uses in C2. However, the mausoleum that's in the R1 zone, although it has a conditional use for columbaria and mausoleums, I believe they are, there is some sort of attachment that they are not allowed to have that outdoors. Is that correct?
The mausoleum that is in the R1, I guess, what's your definition of outdoors?
So, on this, it says on page 259, it says the Palm Boulder Mausoleum next to cemetery, it received its initial conditional use permit in 1980, per the land sale agreement attached to the ordinance outside burial is not permitted.
So, cemetery. That was the conditional use to that, yes.
So, they could have outdoor mausoleum and columbaria outdoor.
Correct.
In the R1. Okay, so, does the R1, but the uses in the R1s and the residential and the commercial, there's nothing in the codes that right now allow something in R1, be allowed in commercial and vice versa, right? Those are exclusive residential and commercials unless there's a conditional use.
Correct.
Okay. So, the only really comment that I had on this one is that although we're not looking at the exact property that the applicant is looking at, we have very, very, very little C1 zoning left in Boulder City. I think there's only like five locations. Three of them are between City Hall and Wyoming, and one's across on Utah, and one's over by Reflection Park. So, it's really shrinking that area, and I'm wondering if it's, you know, through different zone amendments that we've done this. So, I can see why a lot of residents were hesitant, because although this isn't for a particular area, there's very little area left in the C1 zone. The only thing that I would have, because all these areas are really, where these zones are located, I wouldn't want to see outdoor use. I didn't see anything that stipulated indoor versus outdoor on here, and I even wouldn't want to probably see the mausoleums, just because of where our C1s are now located for all of our C1, anywhere in the C1. So, that's kind of my input on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, did you wish to make a statement at this time?
Yes, I'd like to make just a couple of statements. We are looking at the Colorado address, but we are also looking for different options that are available. In the 10 years we've been in Boulder City, we've looked at a number of different properties, and every time something comes up, we see these challenges come before us that could be, you know, we could, we could provide a better service if we had a better facility. You know, whether we're in a R1 or a C2 or whatever, we've got to still go through conditional use permits to get it done. Funeral homes should be a staple in any close-knit community. We shouldn't be hit in a back alley, we shouldn't be hit up in the industrial section. That's the thing that just scares me is the way that we see death nowadays has become so taboo that we're all afraid of it. Just to give you a little history, I grew up in small towns my whole life. I've been in small towns, just like Boulder City, cute, beautiful communities. And I'm just going to run through these really fast and just kind of show you where funeral homes are located in these other communities I grew up in, or where I have lived. I grew up in Montpelier, Idaho, a little small town on Highway 89. The funeral home was across the street from an elementary school. The K through 2, or second grade, played in the playground that was right across the street from the funeral home. Not an issue. You know, us as kids, we weren't, you know, we couldn't care less. This come up, you know, a few years ago when there was an old church on Cottonwood that we looked at to purchase, and it was, we kind of got the immediate feel from community that, oh, you're too close to the school, the school will freak out, the people just won't like that idea. We've looked at a number of different things, there's places all over, there's one, there was one on Cottonwood, there's one on Fifth Street that we looked at, there's one on Billy Drive that we looked at, currently looking at Colorado, Park Place, which I would have loved to have been, and then also Adams Boulevard, that would put us in a R1. I would like to change the R1 to be, allow funeral home. The second place, that right after I got out of mortuary school, we went and lived in Haley, Idaho, also known as Sun Valley, Idaho. I was there just a short time, the funeral home was on the main, the main road in Haley. Horrible location, unfunctionable, just because of the traffic size of it, side of it. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't an ideal situation. From there, we moved over to Driggs, Idaho, right at the base of the Tetons, and I worked at, in Driggs, and I worked in Jackson Hole, Wyoming. If you ever get a chance to visit either one of those two communities, stop by the funeral home, take a look at them, look where they're at. They're in neighborhoods. Jackson Hole is three blocks into, off the main road in the neighborhood that functions, it also even has a crematory inside of the building. Like I said, not even trying to put a crematory in, I already have my crematories, they're in Henderson. But that's just, we've got to take the idea of death and celebrate it rather than to be afraid of it. We take, we take our loved ones, when they pass away, should the, should the love that we have for them or the specialness that we have for them decrease? Should it decrease for the families? No. I understand the concerns that were brought up in the initial opening comments, and every one of these people that had comments, I understand their comments. I understand where they're coming from. I would love to sit down with them one-on-one, show them what we have in mind, show them how it would make the community better. I can tell you one thing, if we continue to move forward towards 1404 Colorado Street, I can tell you their property values are not going to be injured, decreased, because I can tell you one thing, that building is a hard building to save with any other type of business because of its size, because of the restrictions that are in C1 zoning. And so, what would happen is it would sit there empty and be an eyesore. I tell you, an eyesore is a lot less, a lot more harming to property values than a beautiful, maintained facility that is very minimal impact on the neighborhood. Today, for example, my office in Boulder City, I had three people that came into my office. They came in for 15 minutes to pick up some paperwork, and then they left. There is occasions where we'll have a service, I'm not going to downplay that, but what we provide for the community in the, in the process is unmeasurable on what we can do. And also, the neighborhood, if you have a loved one that passed, we've got, if that, that building would be perfect because you have that beautiful park across the street that after they get done meeting with me, if they need to have 15 minutes to go walk around, reflect, you know, think about their loved one, they've got Reflections Park. What a beautiful park it could be for those people that are having those, are going through those hard times in their life. Like I said, those that have concerns, be happy to sit down with you, go over the plans, show you what we really want to do with it. Councilman Hoskins was right, it's not a mausoleum, there's not going to be human remains, full-body burial in there, it's going to be a cremation placement with a funeral home inside of it. Everything will be done internal, inside the building, there will be no external grave markers, stuff like that, so it's going to be an indoor, climate-controlled place where people can go pay tribute to their loved ones. And then, as Mayor mentioned earlier, this is just a text amendment, it's not, like I said, we're still going to go back through planning and zoning again, we're going to go back through city council again, there's a lot of, lot of bridges to hop over, I've got a lot of bridges to hop over on the funeral home side of it. I would love to call it a museum, but there is benefits to calling it a cemetery in the fact that there's regulations I have to follow under the cemetery guidelines that protects the community, that protects the neighborhood, protects the building. It's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing that we can do for the community and not just the neighborhood, but the community as a whole. We really like to continue to move forward. If the 1404 doesn't work, we, like I said, we have our eyes on other buildings, but we need something in Boulder City that is more appropriate than where we are currently. We just, we outgrown that facility before I even bought it 10 years ago. I've put a new funeral home in Henderson to help overflow that, but the one concern I have, and I not to, not to place fear on anybody, but this COVID-19 thing that's going on, as I've sat through the meetings, I have laughed at the meetings because I know how unprepared we are as a community. Yeah, we are prepared on the first responder side, we are prepared on that, but we are vastly underprepared when it comes to death. And I have, I was a little put off that I wasn't approached on any of this COVID-19 saying, hey, Tyson, what is your capacity to be able to handle mass death? I could ask the question to all, I asked this question on Facebook the other day just to get a feel for what the community realized we had. I asked them, how many cooler spots do we have for deceased people? How many deceased people can we hold in a cooler inside of Boulder City? The numbers were everywhere, and nobody knows. Does anybody know what that is inside a, inside a city council? And I'll leave a comment there.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629, and this is the public hearing to amend Title 11, Chapter 10 of the City Code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries, and 11, Chapter 10 of the city code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries, and columbaria in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone.
Public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on the current, uh, subject, please.
Go ahead.
All right, this is Judy D. Shane. I would just like to offer the comment, Mr. Smith is right. I, I have always lived in major cities, like Phoenix and Minneapolis, and funeral homes were in the neighborhoods. I don't know how many various funerals over the years I've gone to, but the funeral homes would be on generally a main street with some parking facilities, and, but there would be homes all around it, churches around it, sometimes there'd be drugstores and bakeries and things like that, but they were all in, uh, that type of a setting. They weren't shoved off into some part of town, as he mentioned, up in the industrial, none of them were ever there, they were always right in the middle of town. So he is telling the truth about that, because large cities, they're like that, and I guess I just really don't see where having a funeral home where people go to view the remains, or to say a few prayers, and have a small service, and then inter the ashes in a columbarium, I don't see where that's going to be detrimental to our community at all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, again, this is a public hearing for, uh, Agenda Item 10. If you wish to speak during this public hearing, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
You have comments for the public hearing?
Yes, please. I'd just like to speak in support of Tyson.
Can I get your name, please?
Samantha Pressbridge.
Please go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'd just like to speak in support of Tyson. Um, I think it can only be a benefit to the community. When we've lived in Idaho Falls, Wood Funeral Home is a big funeral home there, and they're right, you know, next to elementary schools and on big intersections, and they're a big part of the community, and I think it can only be beneficial to us.
Thank you. Did you have anything further?
No, that's all.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing on Agenda Item Number 10, to amend Title 11, Chapter 10 of the city code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries, and columbaria in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone. The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment.
Yes, I'd like to make a public comment on the issue at hand. This is Glenn Fane.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, um, the funeral home relocation in Colorado, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, I don't know what other kind of uses you'd be able to use in that type of building, they've got a plan for it. I think, uh, that type of business in that area would probably be a very good neighbor. Uh, it's not like it's something that's going on 24/7, uh, hopefully we'd never go to that, but it's just, you know, it seems like a good use, it's, Colorado's not that busy, it is quite a ways away from most of the homes there. There, if there's, I'm surprised if there's, you know, any homes within 500 feet, maybe one or two behind it, but I, I'm not seeing any drawbacks to allowing this gentleman to pursue their, their goal to, uh, turn that into a, a mortuary. I, I think it's a good plan for a building to be where it's at, what else are you going to put in there? Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have another call?
They were trying.
Okay, the line is now available, uh, if anyone would like to call, number 702-589-9629.
Public hearing.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
He's talking over us right now, though. You there?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Deck Bradband, at, um, 62A to Rail Drive, and I'm also a business owner next to, um, the mortuary right now, I mean, the funeral home. And, um, if you've ever had the privilege of, um, attending one of, uh, the funerals that provided by Tyson, Smith, and gang, there, it's just amazing. There's the softness and the way, the delicateness that he treats a family and the situation, it's, it warms your heart, and, and, um, you know, I, I would, I would think as a city that we would be doing everything we could to help promote, um, the offerings that Tyson's trying to bring. He, he brings, um, only goodness to death, and, you know, he, he provides extra services that most funeral homes don't even consider, and, and, uh, you know, I think even what we heard here, the only thing that they're really trying to mend is for him to have the funeral home there, because every, all the other conditions work, but, um, that, that just, I mean, I've worked with him in that building office, I don't know how many times, and, and it really is never, even with the parking and everything like that, it's never been a consideration. So the worry that, uh, people would have living around there would, would not have any, um, detriment to their properties, and I would just, I would, I would vote that everyone support this, um, hold handling. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Hello?
Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is May Curtis, and I'm just calling, because I want to agree with the last caller about, I've, I've been to a couple of, um, Tyson's services he's put for previous family members, and I must, because I've been to others, he hasn't put, and others people have, and the ones that he have, you can, you can tell, like, he put all his heart and love into it, and, um, and to answer his question about how many people are, he can host, it's about, I think it's like three, he's only allowed to, there's only space for about three bodies that he can host, and I think, even though we're a small town, I mean, that's a very small number, and, um, and like, many I know that live here, we want to only improve our town, and I think his funeral home would do that for us, and, and yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing?
My name is Mary Ann Ray.
Hello?
Hey, anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing?
Can you mute your computer, please?
Hello?
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 Go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Ray, and I'm sorry, all of those people who are calling in to you, do not live in this neighborhood. I, I am sorry.
Ma'am.
Everybody in this neighborhood.
Excuse me, ma'am, but...
This is not a good...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we really can't hear you. Uh, whatever, if you're listening to this on your computer, or whatever, you're, uh, listening to this livestream, if you could turn that volume down, uh, for the period of time you wish to make a comment.
This neighborhood is, is in favor of change of policy. We were told of this, the only information we ever got about this was over a article in the Boulder City Review. This is wrong, wrong, wrong. And I ask all those people who are in favor of this, who would want a mortuary in their neighborhood? I really think this should come up, where we can speak up in person, because everyone in this neighborhood opposes this. Thank you very much.
And could you state your name again, please?
We were called up here.
Were you able to get the name?
I can see the caller.
All right. Well, again, and, you know, this is taxing our technology here to, uh, attempt to do our public comment this way. I do believe we understood, uh, the gist of what the caller was saying. Um, again, I, I will say this, if you do call in, uh, whatever you're watching the livestream in, you need to turn that volume down. Uh, there is a lag between, uh, what we are doing here in the council chambers and when you see it, and that results in a lot of overlap, uh, which obviously has confused some of the callers. So if you do wish to call in for public comment, please turn down whatever device you're listening to the, uh, video stream on, and that will make the communication over the phone line much clearer for, uh, both you and for us to be able to hear. So if anyone else does wish to call in, the number is 702-589-9629. request to amend Title 11, Chapter 10 of city code to allow funeral homes, mortuaries, and columbaria in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone. If you wish to call in, the number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Nancy Dunne. I live on Denver Street. I overlook the property that is the proposed funeral home slash mortuary, and we, as all Denver residents on this, um, area, who were really not notified of the proposed tax amendment to change that building into a mortuary, we are totally against that, and I understand that the people who are saying that it's such a wonderful thing, it's not in their backyard. However, it is in our backyard, and we are looking down upon our beautiful city, and would look down upon this funeral home, and everything that would be going on there. Unfortunately, it is not as wonderful as the people before us have spoken, that, um, I understand they would handle it with care and dignity for every person who is lost. I lost my husband two years ago, I totally understand. I also had his body cremated, which I totally understand, but I also don't want to look out my window and see that, and I hope that people would understand that, that it's not something that we would appreciate in our backyard. Not only does that bring down our value of our homes, but it just is not the environment that we want for the Reflection Park that we have fought so hard for, and the, um, water treatment plant that had, was in such, the filtration plant that was in, um, controversy just so, so many weeks ago, that, so we've been fighting for all of this beautiful property, and now we're looking at a funeral home, right there on Denver, on, on Colorado, we're on Denver, but on Colorado Street. And so we are asking you to please, 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 look at this from, um, a, a resident's point of view, and come up here, maybe look and see what you would think before you decide on this issue, because this is, this is something that we have collectively, uh, all agreed upon, that is not right for our neighborhood, when there are so many other places in this town where this facility could be located. And we just ask you to please, please, put this in a, a perspective from our point of view, and also allow us to please come to a meeting in person, and tell you how passionate we are about this, because this, this really does affect our, our day-to-day life, if you would only see it from our point of view, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I am Nancy Dunne on Denver Street.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
All right. All right, public hearing is still open, uh, the phone number is 702-589-9629, and again, if you do call in, please turn down the volume on whatever device you're watching the livestream on, otherwise we get a lot of overlap on the sound. again is 702-589-9629. again is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to City Council for discussion. Anyone wishing to have questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to make clear, just like the other ones, I know we've heard a lot of comments about addressing specific locations that the applicant may have indicated he is interested in. We're not here to discuss that right now at this time. We are here to talk about the zoning. You know, last time we were here, when we were talking about conditional uses, I believe it had to do with iron fabrication or ornamental, we were, you know, concerned about things like noise pollution, you know, chemical waste, odor nuisance, things, things of that nature, you know, none of which I really foresee being an issue in this. I can't agree more with the idea that these are places of respect, these are places that are solemn in nature, but that do provide a real service to our community. It is unfortunate that death and conversations around that have become so taboo, but they are a part of our life. I mean, I can't think of one thing that is, that is more certain, that is more intimate than that. And I really just don't see the, the concept of this type of, of service or services being provided, or businesses, business being provided in this zoning as being detrimental to our community. I do see it as being something that can benefit this community, because, because of its unique nature and because of its proximity to, to our own personal lives. I don't believe that, that trying to keep it out of sight, out of mind is of benefit to our community at all. That is not to say that, you know, I have any support for any one particular place for any types of these businesses. I am just looking at this as a whole, and I just do not see where this type of, of service can be a problem for our community, because it, it's something that we need. It's, 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 there's, there's no getting around that aspect of it. So those are, those are my thoughts when it, when it comes to this, you know. Everybody here has had to deal with death in, in one way or another. I just don't see how, saying that this doesn't belong in this type of zoning, I, I just don't see how that is realistic, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Okay, yeah, thank you. I have to agree. I don't live that far, I certainly am not within the 500 feet or looking out over, but certainly within a couple of blocks. And I also can see that on C1, it allows for restaurants and cafes. I mean, I've, I've read a comment that someone said about the traffic and, and that restaurants and cafes, social halls, lodges, fraternal organizations, and clubs are current uses of C1, correct? Those are all permitted conditional uses in C1, including educational, religious, cultural buildings, and in fact, country clubs, golf courses, and swimming pools are also conditional uses for C1. So my impression is, certainly there is a stigma and of the, certain kinds of businesses conote certain attitudes, but I certainly would think that in terms of, of parking and traffic and, and the nature of the people going in and out of the building would certainly be quite different from social halls and lodges in terms of, of noise and traffic, that you have a very respectful attitude of the people around there. And I like when he was talking about the people going across from the Reflections Park, because that certainly is a lovely place. So that's, that was what I wanted to talk about.
Any others, questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so just the comparing uses of what else in C1, like currently, like I said, a lot of them are in uses that are within this small area, so, but a lot of the businesses with C1 are conducted mostly indoors, as far as the purpose. While there's conditional uses that might fit certain areas, I just would like to see that this conditional use kind of stick with that purpose of C1, of kind of being more of an indoor business. I feel like this is kind of backwards, where our funeral home, at least the one that we currently have in our city, you really, most of their business, their business is all conducted indoors, you don't really see anything attached to it that's outdoor. So I think that having the funeral homes as a conditional use would fit with, with a conditional use. They do conduct a lot of their stuff inside. My only hesitation is the columbaria and mausoleums, because those are, can be indoor or outdoor, I would just like to stipulate in this conditional use that they are in the C1 zone, that they remain indoor. And then even separating the columbaria and mausoleums from one another, I would prefer the columbaria for the C1 versus the mausoleums, having them together. That's my thoughts on this, on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I received several emails and phone calls and, uh, from residents who oppose this, and it, uh, then I received several emails and phone calls from people who have loved ones or they're getting elderly and they are for it. So I, right now, it's an equal balance as to who's against and who's for it, so that's the only comment I'd like to make.
Thank you. You know, my perspective on this, and I certainly understand what the applicant, Mr. Smith, is talking about, you know, I was born and raised here in Boulder City, but my parents were from New Hampshire. I was back there often. My dad was a school teacher, so we often went back there for a month each summer when I was a young child. Quite honestly, I thought it was odd, strange, not making me feel well as a child. Because of the number of family cemeteries and all that, I just wasn't used to that. That just wasn't something that I grew up with here in Boulder City. I certainly understand that it's a stage of life, it's a necessity, but I also felt that, you know, this isn't the kind of thing that I would want in my neighborhood. And when I look at the permissive uses, other uses that are within this category, you know, they do say restaurants, but then they specify no drive-through. They do specify clubs, but then they say, you know, "We don't want you to be dancing or, dancing or entertainment." So in other words, you can come, maybe play peonokle and do that sort of thing, but, you know, very limited. In other words, they provide for some uses, but then they limit it. I think that's indicative, and I believe it was Councilmember Folda brought it out earlier, we have very few of these zones left in town. There were few to start with, because it is neighborhood commercial. It is not commercial, it is neighborhood commercial. That's why there's a distinction between C1 and C2. Setting my personal feelings aside on this, I also have to listen not to folks who come and say, "Oh, this would be a great idea." We're talking about zoning here. So zoning means, you know, what's near you, what's happening in your area, and when we get to the folks who have made it fairly clear in emails, comments, that they do not wish to have this type of use, it's those people who would be most directly affected by it. So I give a great deal of credence to those folks, what they would want to see in their neighborhood, as opposed to people in the general community. Certainly, we understand this is a necessary service. Mr. Smith has an excellent reputation that I'm aware of, but is it a more appropriate use in C2 than it is in C1? And if it is, then we should not be considering it as a conditional use within this zoning classification, but it, I believe it already is allowed within the C2 classification, is that correct, as a conditional use?
Correct.
Okay. This particular building, you know, that brings up another issue, you know, I'm reminded of the old real estate slogan of "Location, location, location." This building was built by the federal government, I believe, on land that they had retained when the federal government turned Boulder City over to the residents here. And because they already owned that property, they decided they would locate an office building on it, I believe back in the, the late 70s or early 80s. As things progressed, they built other office space here, and this building was sold off. And it left it behind, and now what, what happens with the building? Well, there are permitted uses within the C1 designation already. Is there anything you wanted to offer as far as my description of the building?
No, that's accurate. I believe it was built in 1969, and one of the other issues that's unique about this building, besides that it was owned by the federal government, is it was under a prior zoning district classification. It was previously zoned CP, Commercial Professional Zone, because naturally, the question came up, why is a building of this size in the C1 zoning district? And it's because it was built under a zoning, different zoning district classification.
Thank you. Also, when, you know, we talk about our existing cemetery, and that is under the government municipal classification, you know, that was designated from the beginning as the cemetery here in Boulder City. The mausoleum that is in that area, I believe is owned by Palm Mortuary, as I recall, that whole area had been set aside for just this purpose, for allowing for mausoleum, for a funeral home, for those types of services, because it is a recognized service. But it was set aside in a certain area, and again, if my memory is correct, there was a reduction in the, if there was a sale of the land or a transfer of the land, there was a reduction in the cost to do so, because it was recognized as a municipal importance to the city. But then as time went by, Palm Mortuary decided, "Well, we didn't need all that land," and it changed into houses, magically changed into houses, which I believe is why it has that R1 designation, which it would be interesting to research how that came about, how that particular property magically became houses after it was specifically set aside just for cemetery and mausoleum, just the purposes we're discussing tonight. So I, I would have to say that, that based on the feedback I've had, I, I would not be able to support something like this. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, Mr. Tyson attended to my husband's death, and I want to say what a fantastic job he did, very, very helpful to the family, very respectful of his, his body and et cetera. But I do have to kind of put that aside and look at this, the code, the city code in the C1, and, and make my decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Mr. Mays, just to kind of clarify what the process, let's just say we were to move forward similar to, to the other one. Once that is done, then the applicant would have to come back with, essentially, asking for that, looking for that conditional use permit. At that time, like you said before, that was, they would have to go through the Planning Commission, then you would have to notify those members, then that, those discussions of those people most affected would have that opportunity to make that comment as to whether or not they felt it was appropriate for that area or not. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And if the Planning Commission approved it, approved of that, yet there were those in that, could that, that then be appealed to the City Council, that the City Council would weigh in as to whether or not that use would be appropriate?
How our code is set up is if somebody who either in writing or in person opposed a consideration by the Planning Commission, and within the seven-day time period submitted an appeal, then it would be appealed to the City Council.
I kind of wanted to clarify that, because I, I know there are a number of people who are really concerned, in particular with the Colorado building. I am not deaf to that, I understand that concern, and, and I'm not saying that I don't, that I don't agree with that concern or anything like that, but that's not the discussion. We're not here to say whether or not that building is, is appropriate or not, you know, we're talking about in, in the use as a zone. And that, for me, is where I'm kind of coming down on, on this, on this one, because there will be that opportunity for people, if they don't want it in their backyard, they can, they'll have that opportunity to say. It'll also allow for other people, if there is, you know, he also mentioned, he's looking at other various locations, you know, it allows for other people who may be agreeable to having it in their backyard, the opportunity to say so, should he look into a different area. So for me, I, I think we have to look at it, and like I said, when I look at how the decision we came to with previous, uh, conditional use permits and going, I, I just don't see that denying this because one particular building is an issue, when that's not the discussion that we're having right now. We're discussing whether this is appropriate or not, and for me, my personal belief is that it is. I am totally fine with, that is not where other council members are.
Any other questions or comments? All right, it's time if anyone would like to make a motion. Again, there are amendments that are possible, I'm not sure what anyone would amend on this, but if anyone would like to make a motion, now would be the time to do so.
I would like to make a motion to accept bill number 1871 with, with the findings. However, I'd like to amend, if possible, changing mausoleums, or removing mausoleums from that, from that description, if that's possible. How would, you, you said to keep it consistent, and I want to know what that...
I, I think just greater clarity, removing it from the C1 zoning district?
Yes, uh-huh. Yes, removing it from the C1 district.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor, anyone wishing to second that motion? A motion fails to have a second and therefore is not viable. Anyone else wishing to make a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve bill number 1871 as written.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion fails 3-2. All right, that will bring us then to item number 11 for possible action, resolution 7097, approval of lease for ABC Park. Oh, by the way, thank you, Mr. Mays, although I think you're still going to be there. This is approval of lease for ABC Park Building to Lendahand. Actually, it might be Mr. Armentraut.
Mayor, it's just an introduction. We had to start over.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Our time had expired on that.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make the bill introduction on this?
Mayor, I wish to introduce bill number, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. If anybody else wants to. I wish to introduce resolution number 798. No, why am I?
Number 11.
Thank you. I was on the right one. Introduce bill number 1874 with the title, waive the reading. Thank you.
Bill number 1874, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City approving agreement number 20-1876 between the city of Boulder City and Lendahand for rental of Cottage 3 at ABC Park located at 801 Adams Boulevard. Bill 1874 will be considered at the May 26, 2020 regular council meeting next week.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 12. Apparently, this is also an approval for lease, but does not require a bill introduction, apparently. So, Mr. Armentraut?
This is actually a license agreement, not a lease, so that's why it doesn't require a bill.
Thank you.
If maybe...
Thank you for the clarification.
Knock mine down a couple notches. It'll stop the feedback.
All right. I put my binder down, but Michael was really efficient at killing whatever was on the podium, and it's swimming in Clorox. This is a request by the Chamber of Commerce to license office space within the historic LA Water and Power Building there at the corner of Nevada Way and Wyoming. They'd like to, they need to relocate as the building they're currently located in is being sold out from underneath them. They were informed by the current owner that they needed to vacate, and the new owner has no desire for them to stay. There was questions earlier during the public comment about rent. They do not currently pay rent at this location, and I believe Ms. Legan mentioned that also during her public comment. They had investigated other locations, including several on Nevada Highway with the National Park Service, and specifically the National Park Service, which is directly across the street from LA Water and Power Building. They said, thanks, but no thanks, as they use all their space. The other space that's owned by a government entity, the old Welcome Center, they had tried to work something out with the state, but the state is in lockdown, and the people they need to work with aren't available, so they haven't heard back from the state. So that's why they came to the city as a matter of last resort, as they are in a time crunch. As mentioned before, the city does own the LA Water and Power Building. We did purchase that from the actual Los Angeles Department of Water and Power some time ago. It's currently used by Emergency Aid. They have a license agreement with the city. They pay no rent. Within their agreement, it does list the value of the in-kind services for which they're getting the rent deferred. The other license agreement is with the Red Mountain Music Company, also for office spaces. And theirs is just, it doesn't have an in lieu component, it's just no rent. This particular agreement is modeled after the Lendahand lease, although using the term license for this location. Someone did mention during public comment that it was, oh, they required landscaping. That was an artifact that didn't get removed, and we'll remedy that upon passage, assuming it passes. They're not required to put landscaping in, although if they want to landscape our building, it's better than us, but it's not a requirement. As a nonprofit, the city charter and state law do allow the city council to license land at whatever rate you choose to, as our practice has been with nonprofit entities to lease or license land at no cost. That is what the recommendation has been in the staff packet. We had talked with Tom Tyler from Emergency Aid. I talked to him last Thursday, and I wouldn't use the word enthusiastic, but he was okay with the Chamber of Commerce coming in. And then shortly thereafter, I called Rose Woodbury, who's the director for the Red Mountain Music Company, and she just happened to be with Jill Legan at that time, and she had no problem temporarily relinquishing several spaces so that the Chamber of Commerce could use those spaces for their operation. The agreement is what we've used for other nonprofit entities, does require them to be responsible for any maintenance of the facility that they use in the interior. They're also responsible for any modifications that they make, but they do have to get city approval prior to make those modifications. And in the event they require building permit, they're required to get those permits. The provision on the utilities, it's the same provision we have for Red Mountain Music Company and Emergency Aid. That building does not have separate meters for each individual office space. It's master metered. But anything beyond what the city provides, they're responsible to pay on their own. In this case, it's telephone and internet. Emergency Aid pays for their own telephone and internet. Red Mountain Music Company pays for their own telephone and internet. And the Chamber of Commerce, should they locate in this building, would be required to do the same. Otherwise, the utilities that they use is captured by the city as a donation in kind as part of our overall support for the nonprofit entities within the community, where we try to keep track of what the value of the in-kind donations are for the city, such as use of sports fields, or in this case, use of office space. Then I'm ready to answer any questions you have. I don't know if we need to get Ms. Legan on the phone again or not? If you have questions?
I don't believe so. This isn't really an application. It's, any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Hoskins?
If the council would like to turn to page one. I have issued this agreement, 211881. This is a legal document, and it needs to be correct. On page one, we have listed the chamber mailing address at 400 Utah Street, the address of Lendahand. Page 298, 299, 301, 307, and the map all reflects the address of 600 Wyoming Street. All other documents with the address at 600 Nevada Way. Address should be 600 Nevada Way. 600 Wyoming Street is in the middle of the road at Ash in Wyoming. Incorrect information on legal documents could be problematic, especially for insurance and liability. Section 1, description of the premises. Page one of the agreements states the assigned office space to be occupied and improved by licensees. Licensee is premises located at 600 Wyoming Street, Boulder City, Nevada. One woman could interpret that the chamber is leasing the entire building and not just a portion. The description of the area to be leased should be included, square footage and the location as it does in the lease agreement with Emergency Aid and with Red Mountain Music. This agreement could be a problem with the other entities occupying this building. Section 2, the terms. The chamber agreement is written for a three-year period with the possibility of extension in one-year increments. Emergency Aid's agreement is a month-to-month agreement, and in Red Mountain's music agreement, there is no mention of a timeframe or term. Section 6, a licensee shall be responsible for all, any and all utilities. Under section 6 of the Emergency Aid agreement, the city will provide water and wastewater services, and the licensee will provide electrical, et cetera. Unless there are separate meters for all entities, it will be challenging to determine who uses what. There is no mention of the in-kind dollar amount for the space to be leased, as there is in the Emergency Aid and the Red Mountain agreement. My biggest fear is that the COVID-19 crisis could continue for some time, and Emergency Aid may need more space. They have been and will be a lifeline for some people. At a time like this, the city must protect this vital organization and ensure that they have ample space to operate. Staff addressed the issue with the council concerning the chamber wanting to lease this building a few months ago, and the staff stated that Red Mountain Music was moving to the Smith Building, and the chamber wanted to move into the Red Mountain space temporarily. Three years is not temporary, and now it appears Red Mountain may stay at the building and share their space with the chamber. Several people have called me to express their concern that the city is trying once again to move Emergency Aid out of the building and allowing the chamber to move in with longer leases than Emergency Aid and force Emergency Aid out of the building. Under the current extreme circumstances, I can see the chamber using two offices, office spaces on a month-to-month basis while they procure their own office space. There is a possibility that this building will not be a good fit for the chamber, and they may find a building that will offer them a better fit. Terms of agreement, Red Mountain has no terms agreement. Emergency Aid has a month-to-month, and the chamber's agreement contains a three-year plus, as I stated. I think Emergency Aid should have priority, especially now when so many people are dependent on their service. Statements such as, this council keeps putting things off and getting things, not getting things done. And this statement is true. We have been delaying items. This agreement is an example of why the council delays. When articles are agendized with errors that could become a legal problem or harmful to the city, it is our fiduciary duty as council members to delay passing these articles until they are corrected. I would appreciate if the staff would furnish the council with the documents that are going to be placed on the agenda, and these two weeks or more in advance of the council has ample time to review. And I am concerned that this is not brought before the HPC. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment or ask questions? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah. I think the only, the only comment I had about, from everything that I've heard since this issue came up, was just having a read-through by the Historic Preservation Committee, because it is a historic building. Even though there are most likely no issues that would come up about it, I'm very familiar with that building. I have spent a lot of time in that building. I'm convinced that there is plenty of space. I know Emergency Aid exactly what their needs are in terms of office space. I don't believe this would infringe upon them. In fact, of all the time I've spent in there, I've never seen anyone from Red Mountain Choir. I know they use it at completely different times. I don't think it would infringe upon the classes being held in the social hall. There are two bathrooms in the, I'm sorry, four bathrooms in the entire building. As far as I know, none of the offices have water. Two of the bathrooms are off the hall, men's and women's, and two of them are for public use when you first walk in on Nevada Way. I do have a question. Why Emergency Aid's address is 600 Nevada Way, and the address on here is 600 Wyoming Street?
I pulled the address off our GIS mapping system, and it had it listed as 600 Wyoming. Apparently, our mapping system is wrong.
Yes. I believe, according to every document that is sent out from Emergency Aid, the address is 600 Nevada Way. And I too, I like the idea of being specific about the space usage, because while I personally don't believe there's a threat to Emergency Aid in that building, it might tend to make people feel more comfortable saying that this is, this is what is used by Emergency Aid, and this would be used, the specific offices, I believe Jill told me she needed to, would be used for their purposes. And that's it right now. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I did reach out to Tom Tyler. Obviously, he wasn't speaking on behalf of Emergency Aid, but he did seem to be agreeable to having them share the same space. Didn't seem to think that that would be a conflict. Obviously, there has always been a lot of concern that we maintain a healthy relationship with Emergency Aid because of how important a service they provide. With regards to the chamber, they do also provide an important service, especially during this time when, you know, businesses are also struggling trying to, you know, figure out their steps forward. Unfortunately, as I continue to review this, I kind of start to have more and more questions, especially with regards to it being a historic building, you know, whether it's more appropriate to cover that in this specific lease, or whether or not we need to have, I mean, in general, I think we do, need to have greater discussion about what is permitted use in our historic buildings, and what does that process look like? Does it go through the Historic Preservation Committee? Things like, things of that nature. And then with regards to the timeframe on here, when I spoke with Jill, you know, the understanding is that this is a temporary solution for them, that this is not where they're looking to be permanent. So I'm not sure that it is necessary to have language in there that allows for three years and then a renewal on a yearly basis after that for each time, because this is supposed to be looking at a temporary. So I would be more amenable to perhaps a year, if people would like to see it even shorter, I'm open to that, but just stopping it at that, reevaluating that relationship, seeing where they are, making sure that that has been a good use of the building, that there has not been any problems as far as recognizing the historical nature of that building and how it is being used. So, you know, it's one of those things where I don't want to leave the chamber hanging, you know, high and dry right now during this time, but it's unfortunate that suddenly this is happening, and this kind of has come to us. And obviously, there are a lot of little minute details in here that seem to be a concern. And so that's, you know, when we get these sorts of things, especially with leasing, you know, our historic buildings, we want to make sure we get it right, because that also protects people like the chamber, you know, moving forward so that they know what is appropriate and what is not. And certainly, I don't believe that the chamber is looking to make any drastic changes or to do anything to the building, and I'm not implying that they would. But it's important that we make those distinctions upfront, just so that every party is in equal understanding. And I'm just not sure that we're quite there with a lot of the concerns that were raised by individuals that I have spoken to with regards to historic preservation. Those are my comments for now.
Mr. Armentraut, can you explain what the difference between a lease and a license is?
Probably better if we have the city attorney explain that difference.
Mr. City Attorney, you are being called upon. And again, I hope everyone realizes, you know, we are maintaining social distancing, all of that. That's why some people are in other rooms and come in as needed. So again, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor. So a license is not exclusive use to a particular property, whereas a leasehold does provide exclusive use to a particular property. It's usually for a shorter period, not for a definite term. So just a lower level of property rights, if you will. So just a lower level of property rights, if you will. Ownership, lease, license. And so that's the primary distinction.
And how, what impact does that have on NRS 268, which addresses leasing of property, not exclusively addresses that, but that's one of the things that is in that section? Because when I had asked what legal basis does the city have to go about doing something like this, the information that was provided to me was from NRS 268 saying that, well, we have the right to lease. And again, at that time, the term that was being used was leasing. Tonight's actually the first time that I have a realization that we're not talking about a lease, we're talking about a license. But within 268.053, it states that the governing body may lease real property to a nonprofit that, A, is recognized as exempt under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. The chamber is a 501(c)(6). And I do understand that there must be a difference there. There must be a significant difference legally about that because in the CARES Act, and this is something I've discussed with the chamber CEO, it provided for some benefits or some funding of 501(c)(3)'s, but nothing for 501(c)(6)'s. So there is definitely a distinction between those two. The Nevada revised statute appears to make that distinction. So once again, I'm not sure we're on solid legal footing to be able to say we're going to make some arrangement for no dollars or reduce dollars
Right.
to an organization that is not a 501(c)(3),
C)(3.
but has a different tax designation due to the nature of what they do. In other words, they are not a nonprofit that serves the community such as emergency aid or lend a hand. They are a (c)(6), which is considered a business organization.
And I'd be happy to look into that further, Mayor. You know, as I stand before you right now, I haven't had an opportunity to conduct that research, but I'd be happy to do that and get back to the council in that regard.
Okay. Thank you. And again, now that you've made it clear about this distinction between licensing and leases, emergency aid, is that a lease that they currently have?
I believe, I believe it's a license, but I'd have to go back and check and verify.
Okay. And the arrangement then with the Red Mountain Music Company, was that also a license or a lease?
I believe that's a license as well.
Okay. So we have a number of licenses all on the same premises.
Correct.
Again, and this is more of my general comment, I'm very concerned about that. When I read this document, it refers to the building. And if we're saying that, well, we're using licenses rather than leases and maybe there's some legal difference there regarding being able to do that with a nonprofit, then I would want to know, well, what does that license pertain to?
Sure.
And again, these comments are no longer directed at you. These are just my general observations. You know, I did have a chance to speak with the chamber CEO on a couple of occasions and said, you know, I understand, and by the way, this situation came up prior to the pandemic. They were aware that they were going to lose their space for which they paid no compensation for due to change in ownership of the building is what I understood. Then the pandemic hit. So their situation didn't change. It's that the pandemic changed a lot of things. And I do understand they're doing very important work now in forming businesses of safety guidelines of all of those types of different things. But what I said was, on a very temporary basis, we might be able to look for someplace to help out during this. Three years plus a year plus a year plus a year add infinitum is not temporary. Okay? Temporary is like three months,
Correct.
six months, not three years. So that's another, and again, I'm not addressing these questions to you, although you're standing in front of me, so.
That's all right, Mayor.
So that's an issue I have with this arrangement as well. And I'm certainly not trying to denigrate the work that the chamber does, but I also understand that they were in the Boulder Dam Hotel prior to this, also paying no rent. And that space was determined to be necessary for something else. So they found other offices. They were offered the space where they're at now, again, at no cost. And my concern is that we have a chamber that appears to linger at, without paying any rent, without paying anything, at certain locations. That troubles me, that we have an organization that only seems to move on from something when they're told to move on. They don't look for their own space. They don't pay for their own space. My understanding is that there was some arrangement with the state property down at what we called the Y, the intersection of Nevada Way and Boulder City Parkway. You know, the state being shut down, I don't know that there needs to be people going into a building if there's some arrangement with that. So that, again, is some government property. We have, my understanding is the city has no interest in that, but somehow the chamber's involved in that. And then they have a future plan that they'll be in the Railroad Museum if that expansion ever occurs. I understand how difficult it is on businesses at this time. Many of them are simply being crushed. Many of them are not going to survive. So I don't want to say, well, the business community needs to figure this out. But we're talking about an organization that has a history of essentially looking for someplace where they pay nothing. And I think that's unfortunate on the part of the business community, that they don't recognize that this is a place that is needed and supports that. And so at the end, it's, well, what's the government going to do? Where's my last stop that's going to give me what I want? And it's the government. And earlier, the CEO had made a comment that, you know, we don't subsidize them. Well, you know, we give them $5,000 a year for advertising expense for an event. I do think we put an awful lot out there. But the most troubling aspect of this for me is this NRS section that says nonprofits may be exempt from some of the normal requirements for giving over value to another entity, but it's for 501(c)(3)'s. So to just make a blanket statement about nonprofits and then we have a specific designation within the state law, that's very troubling. The information that Councilmember Hoskins brought out, clearly this document's not ready for primetime. I mean, to approve it in the format it's in, I don't see how that's possible for me to support something that has so many technical errors in it. So that's what I have to say. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
If these were licenses, and I have all three agreements in front of me, the emergency aid is a license agreement number 04883, Red Mountain Music is agreement number 04896-A and B. And of course, this is a license agreement. So they're all license agreements.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Fuller?
Thank you. So I want to agree with the things that councils have said as well. You know, I'm disappointed in this document. It's not ready for approval, as is. There are things, when I had asked, and so this was originally supposed to be heard last week at our regular city council, because of the way it was agendized, we had to postpone it till tonight. So last, not yesterday, Monday, but last Monday, I don't even know what day it is anymore. Whatever that was. So the 11th, when I had a briefing and I asked about questions about this, you know, I asked about what agreement that Linda Hand, excuse me, not Linda Hand, Emergency Aid and Red Mountain had. And I was told that these were non-exclusive agreements, that we can move them in different locations within the building. Now that I'm hearing tonight that he talked to the heads of those agencies last Thursday and that they verbally made an agreement, we have an actual written agreement with them. And I'm just concerned that these things keep coming forward when we have, and council's trying to keep us out of liability issues. And it's frustrating. We have a written agreement with both Linda Hand, or with both Red Mountain and Emergency Aid. It's getting really late. I'm sorry, I can't think anymore. But what's concerning also, when I received a copy of the actual agreement with specifically Red Mountain, there was an attachment to it which was a map of the area that they were to be leasing attached to it. We don't have a copy of that in our records for some reason. And so that's my question is, you know, here we're getting into, we're going to move someone with a verbal agreement. We don't have the written agreement that we're moving them and we're missing part of the agreement that we have originally with them. I just, I'm just frustrated by the liability that we keep putting ourselves out there. Also, I agree with everyone else that said the terms of this limit. You know, when this was proposed like a month ago, you know, which is mentioned a month ago, it was for temporary. And well, you know, my view of temporary and what's written here is probably, is different because my, I was assuming it's to be like a six-month or a month-to-month contract. This is going to several years, and so I agree with that. I also have concerns with the building and if they're going to be using signage to the outside of this historic building, none of these things were considered. I just feel this is fast-tracked. And here we are, it's council trying to keep us, you know, out of liability issues. It's just, it's very concerning.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on this item? Okay, for lack of a motion, then, the item fails. We'll now move to item number 13, which is a discussion of the STANTEC contract. And this item was requested for consideration by Councilmember Hoskins. Councilmember Hoskins, we have Keegan Lutrell, the Public Works Director here. Mr. Lutrell, would you like to make an initial presentation on it?
Sure.
Please, please do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Lutrell, your Public Works Director. Before you is a discussion of the possible cancellation of the STANTEC study. Just a little background information, this was originally approved in December of 2018 for the, just shy of 500,000 to do a study on City Hall and other buildings. Where we're sitting right now is approximately $95,000 left on the contract. We did reach out to the consultant STANTEC to ask them if we were to cancel this contract, approximately how much more money would you have to bill us? And they said there's about $8,000 outstanding, so that brings us down to about $87,000. To date, we actually received the final draft almost exactly a month ago, the draft, yeah, the final draft. The steps, if we weren't to cancel to finish this contract out, would be to provide the conceptual plans. I know there are some drawings that are in the 500 pages they've supplied already, but it would be more detailed conceptual plans. Those are just kind of block drawings of City Hall and the Police Department. But they would provide conceptual plans to address the safety, security, and ADA access, which was a primary function of this contract. They would also refine the estimates that they had put together based on previous council presentation and the two public meetings that we held on March 3rd and March 4th. And then there would be one final presentation to council. That's all part of their milestone five in their proposal, which they had estimated at about $50,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And again, Councilmember Hoskins, where you had requested this, if you would like to initiate any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Reviewing the financials, I noticed the city was paying, still paying a hefty amount to STANTEC. I requested a copy of the agreement and I asked our staff to advise me it was possible to cancel the contract. I reviewed the agreement and determined we could cancel without any penalty, and staff agreed. Therefore, our request decided to be placed on the agenda so my fellow council members could also review and determine, determine if canceling would be the right course of action. As you can see by the staff's financial report, the general signed reflects half a million dollars was set aside for this project. And the remaining contract amount is 95,000. I know that he's saying now it's about 87,000 and they would settle for 50,000. But anyway, the city would save approximately 95,000 if we vote to cancel the agreement. The staff's report continues, quote, "Public work does not recommend the cancellation of the agreement in order to obtain important and final project deliveries from the ending stages of STANTEC's work," end of quote. I believe that we cannot afford to see the ending stages of the report and it would be financially irresponsible for the city to continue. I think the report is flawed and expensive. Financially, it is not possible at this time to implement the suggestion, suggested changes, and it may not be for years to come, if ever. The STANTEC report was well presented. It had many pictures and it seemed impressive until you read the details. The report evaluated 51 buildings. This would have amounted to about $10,000 per building. This is an astonishing amount of money. One of the assessed buildings was the water filtration plant. The report of December 23rd, 2019 referenced page 201, old filtration plant, 21419. Under exterior B 7.1, quote, "Roof is in fair condition and burr," which means buildup roof, "will need to be replaced once the building is reactivated," end of quote. Note, a new roof was donated and installed in 2018 by Cooper Roofing. If anyone examined the roof, they would have been able to see that it was a new roof. Under C 9.1, elevator finishes. There is no response indicating there is no elevator or there is one. There were many pictures of PVC pipes, but no photos are mentioned of the phenomenal engineering of the piping, which is a large part of this fantastic building. I discovered many errors within the report, and this is one example and part of the reason I do not believe the city should spend the remaining 95,000 to see this final report. I personally have seen enough. I've heard from others, and I agree, this service could have been performed by our staff and volunteers who are experts in this field. The city then could have used a half million dollars to renovating the buildings. We have a lot of excellent engineers on staff and they, I think, could have accomplished what they've accomplished through this report. During the present COVID-19 crisis, the city has suffered a tremendous financial loss and could suffer more. It is essential that the city be financially conservative and review our budget line item by line item, removing some that are unnecessary. This agreement was approved by the previous council, so I do not have all the details as to why the council voted to spend approximately a half a million dollars on this project. As council members, I hope you will all join me in being financially responsible by going yes to cancel this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else with questions or comments? Um, I, I would just, you know, one, I, I appreciate uh Councilmember Hoskins bringing this forward. I think she makes an excellent point. Uh, you know, it's like, well, we've already spent a lot of money, why don't we spend some more money on this? Um, I, I don't find a, a purpose for this report, to be honest with you. Uh, you know, I, I know it started at a point in time uh where it was called the City Hall Customer Service Project. And, you know, it's like, what's happening with the report? Oh, well, we're going to look at other buildings and we're going to do an inventory and we're going to do this. And I'm not faulting any, any one uh person about that. Uh, but this thing went from a little project to take a look at City Hall to a citywide project that cost an enormous amount of money, in my opinion. And when I looked at the evaluations that were being done of the buildings, um, you know, I, I used to work in insurance, uh, property insurance. I looked at engineering reports as far as uh extensive damage, probable causes of damage, things like that. Um, thi- this was not that. I, I did not see how they were doing a technical evaluation of the buildings in town. Um, you know, i- and again, I'm not trying to insult them, I believe they were given instructions on what they wanted to do, but what I would call what I saw in the report, uh, we used to refer to them as drive-by inspections. In, in other words, instead of getting out and doing a very thorough examination of walls, foundations, roofs, siding, all of that, um, you basically just drive by, take a few photos, and you're on your way. And uh, you know, we're paying thousands of dollars per building for an inspection. And as I say, the value, the quality, the level of evaluations I saw on the report, um, I, I don't think that was worthwhile. It doesn't tell us what condition those buildings are in. And a- again, the criteria, I heard it several times in the presentation that was made, uh, highest and best use, you know, this building has a higher and better use. Uh, well, that's a subjective determination, and that's a subjective determination depending on someone's criteria. And when you start applying that to things like the Water and Power Building or the Water Filtration Plant or City Hall or the current Police Department, uh, those are value judgments that are already being made about the use of those properties. So I, I, I didn't think that that was appropriate um to say as though we're being instructed on, oh, you, you didn't realize that the use you had for this building uh was wrong, that uh there was something better for you out there. Well, I, I think that's our judgment to make, to be honest with you. So whether we're saving uh fifty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, I simply don't see any reason to put any more into this project. So with that, uh, any other questions or discussion? Hey, uh, Councilwoman Hoskins, would you uh care to make any type of motion or provide direction to city staff?
I, I would make a, a motion to um approve Resolution seventy ninety-nine to terminate the agreement, uh, eighteen dash eighteen oh seven with StanTech Consulting Service.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous then on the approval of that. Thank you, Mr. Lutrell. All right, that brings us to item number fourteen. Uh, we have an appointment to the Airport Advisory Committee. Uh, the names of the individuals who had filled out volunteer data sheets are in our packet, and we did have the one name that was offered in public comment, uh, Simon Whitley. Uh, I will go ahead and open nominations for this and, and nominate Deborah Downs for it. I know that Pastor Downs has served previously on this particular committee.
Mayor, we ended up pulling her data sheet uh this week because she is unable to serve right now. So right now, there's three available to serve, and that's John Bacon, Rob Martin, and Tony Verup.
Right. Well, in that case, then I'll leave it up to someone else to nominate. I, I don't recall, did we get something? I know I had seen one on, I believe it was Mr. Moriterdy that had been pulled, but I didn't see one for Pastor Downs.
Yes, after the packet was published and then we postponed, she pulled and um we just updated the, the data sheets for tod- tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other names then?
And I just want to make one more comment with the person that the uh that was nominated. We don't have a data sheet, and one of the requirements is that they are a Boulder City resident, we can't verify that, because we have had some people um wanting to volunteer, but because of our code states they have to be a resident of Boulder City, they did not qualify.
I appreciate that clarification, and any council member that may have been considering that name should take that into consideration.
I'd like to nominate uh Tony and Tom Verup.
Okay, any other names to be placed in nomination?
I'll nominate John Bacon.
Any other names?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear uh who Councilmember Bridges nominated.
Uh, we have Mr. Verup and Mr. Bacon have been nominated so far.
Thank you.
Hey, I will make a motion then to close nominations. And would appreciate a second on that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so now we vote for the two names.
Vote to close nominations, you have to call for the vote for the closer?
Okay, um, then we will do so. Uh, an affirmative vote would close nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And now we'll take them one at a time then?
Yes, please.
I believe uh Councilmember Bridges had nominated Mr. Verup first. All those in favor, and what we will do is I will have you raise your hand so that the uh Madam City Clerk can say, see that. And for Councilmember Hoskins, uh, please say aye if you're in favor of Mr. Verup, and everyone else, please raise your hands if you're in favor of.
Mayor McManus and Councilmember Bridges.
Okay, so those are two votes. Um, all those in favor of Mr. Bacon?
Councilmember Folda, Councilmember Adams.
So we have a two to two vote. I did not hear uh Member Hoskins.
I voted for the bacon.
Okay, then Mr. Bacon takes it. That will then move us on to uh our last public comment period, item number fifteen. Again, public comment is being made by uh either phone call or email submitted. If you are wishing to speak in public comment, it may be on any issue. The time period is limited to five minutes, and as always, we ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. The phone number is seven oh two, five eight nine, nine six two nine.
Public comment?
Yes, good evening. For the record, Fred Volz. It was profoundly disappointing that the city manager added no agenda item tonight about the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital and operating budgets and his interim efforts to identify major and overdue expense reductions. The public has neither seen nor heard of any visible effort by city staff to adjust their excessive desires and expectations about what a small city with shrunken revenue prospects can afford. Unlike the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, which announced last week that it was reducing its budget by thirty-six percent and could survive for two years without any additional revenue, Boulder City clearly cannot accomplish that feat with its proportionally large staff and unrealistic capital projects. Relying on applied analytics projections, whose expertise is in real estate and gambling, both factors that are not components of Boulder City's core economy, suggests that the peony cuts thus far proposed won't keep expenses in line with drastically reduced revenue. Our minimal reserves will be exhausted in short order. There is no assurance of even a partial bailout from the federal government. People in the private sector have lost their jobs, with many of those jobs not coming back where, whenever and however the gambling and entertainment industries might be allowed to resume operations. Restaurants, hotels, and casinos operating at twenty-five or fifty percent capacity, if they can even survive at those patronage levels, will not need the same number of employees they once had and will be paying fractional revenues to government. Bloomberg News recently reported that fifty-two percent of this country's small businesses would permanently close over the next six months. Taxable sales on discretionary items will decrease substantially because household incomes will materially decline. Yet government, meaning our city, the County School District, Clark County, and the state have failed to lay off or furlough nonessential workers at the onset of the shutdown two months ago or required immediate pay freezes or cuts. All of these government employees have been kept on at full salary with their cost of living increases in place as if there is no fiscal crisis. These employees behave as though they are some sort of protected class exempt from the hardship the rest of the populace must endure. The longer the city staff lives in denial about cutting frivolous people, projects, and ancillary expenses, the more painful it will be for staff, the city's residents, and business owners. The city manager needs to come up with a reasonable proposal for cutting an unsustainable budget. He only has one more week to accomplish this formidable task. Otherwise, the council would be well advised to take a sharp axe on May twenty-sixth to the unrealistic budget that has been proposed. In case anyone has the idea that tax or fee increases are the way to go, the elected or appointed officials who would propose them to make up looming revenue drops will incur the public's wrath, including those who don't ordinarily participate in government's deliberations. Increasing our cost of living is a non-starter. Finally, after almost a year of waiting, we in the public are still looking for a proper accounting of the over twenty million dollars of collected utility monies for non-existent capital projects that seems to have vanished into thin air. By what date will the numbers be fully reconciled? And I ask that these comments be added verbatim to the meeting's official record. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we are in our last public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak? The phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. If you do call in, uh, once you have called in, please turn down the volume on whatever device you're watching the live video stream so that we don't get overlap between that and the phone conversation. Again, the phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine.
Public comment?
Yes, good evening. This is uh Simon Whitley, uh, if I can comment, please?
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, uh, thank you for your time, Mayor and the Council. Uh, I just wanted to raise a point of clarification. It was mentioned earlier that for the applicants for the Airport Advisory Committee, that uh, so it, it seems that there's some contradiction there, that the member of staff there said that you still have to be a member, a, a resident, rather, of Boulder City. Yet at Airport Advisory Committee meetings I have attended, I, I have been told that that has, is no longer a requirement, and indeed, there's a now a ten-mile radius on that. So I think some clarification is required on that, uh, in order to perhaps open up the field to other people who might be uh in, very interested in helping to support the Airport Advisory Committee and indeed the city in helping to run uh the airport. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, the phone line is available for the last public comment period. Uh, phone number again, seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine.
Public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment at the end here.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Judy D. Shane. I would like to thank the council for your eleven-and-a-half-hour day counting the airport th- this morning, and I listened to this morning all day, actually, and then your marathon this evening. You guys have definitely gone above and beyond the call of duty for today, so I hope you have a better tomorrow. My other comment is that earlier today, um, after the airport meeting, someone ca- mentioned that it seems that the city council does not get accurate and full information when these things come before you. It, uh, you have to dig it out, and lots of times the correct information does not get to you. It does cause a problem, and I do have to agree, that does seem to what's, seem to be what's happened since the new council came on. So I think staff needs to do a much better job of informing you guys of all the options and everything that's there, and that things need to be accurate when they get to the council so you guys can make an informed decision. I also agree with the comments Mr. Volz has made concerning cutting our budget back to something reasonable, because we are going to have, whether we like it or not, probably three to four years for things to get, kind of get back to normal for our business community, for our residents, and therefore for the city. So we do need to look at those, and it needs to be done sooner rather than later. And I would like to see a fine red pencil taken to the budget for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Uh, you may call in at this time. The phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. And if you are watching the live stream, uh, please turn the volume down on whatever device you're watching so that we don't get the audio overlap that uh often prevents the telephone conversation from occurring. Phone number again, seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. Again, the phone number is seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. All right, hearing no others, we will close the final public comment period.
Mayor, I have one written submission, please.
Oh, excuse me. We will not close the public comment period until we have the email submitted. Thank you.
The email is from Laura Smythe, and she represents Pact Coalition for Safe and Drug-Free Communities. Pact Coalition for Safe and Drug-Free Communities has partnered with The Homestead to provide an outreach program to our community in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The program is called the Friendship Line. Seniors, homebound, or isolated individuals will receive a weekly call from volunteers who have been trained in psychological first aid. To join the Friendship Line, please contact Danielle Meek at seven zero two, two nine four, eight seven two zero. I'll repeat that, seven zero two, two nine four, eight seven two zero. Stay connected and engaged to the community while staying at home.
Thank you. All right, that will then bring us to the close of the public comment period, and on to council reports. Councilmember Adams, any reports this evening?
Not at this time. I don't have any reports, but I will just say, obviously, this has been a long day for not just us here on the council, but also our staff as well. So I would like to thank everybody for all the work that they have put in, especially to Holly. People won't see her on the camera, but Holly has been here all day as well, so I just want to thank everybody for sticking it through with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Nothing to report, but just would like to thank everyone also, and we survived, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiment of, boy, everybody just put in a full day today. I have a SNWA meeting on Thursday, so my next council meeting, I'll have a report on that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to relate first that I'm so excited that school is ending this week. And distance learning has been a trial at our home, and I'm sure for other people as well. But with school ending, CCSD has announced that they will continue to provide meals at the current food distribution sites through June thirtieth. For here in Boulder City, the distribution site is located at Andrew J. Mitchell Elementary School, which is located on Avenue B. The times they are serving are Monday through Friday from seven AM to ten AM. These meals are free for any child ages two to eighteen. They did have a decrease in the amount of people coming when they changed the times to an earlier time. So know that there is food there, they are looking, you know, it's there whether you get it or not, so hopefully, this food can't go to waste. But that is a possibility if you have children in your home, there is a place to go and get that Monday through Friday. They provide breakfast and lunch. Further, federal extension allowed by the USDA, you see, CSD, the flexibility to continue the service through the summer. There may not be the same site, so in July and August, they will be continuing having food available, but the meal sites may change. The changes will be communicated through Parent Link, so for those parents who have their current information, Parent Link will be able to find the new distribution sites if those change in July. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And now with school ending, I guess all the parents are looking forward to have their kids home all the time, right? Please go ahead, Councilmember Bridges.
Thank you, I hadn't thought of it, and when you were talking about the food, I just wanted to, if this is sort of a PSA, that emergency aid of Boulder City has sufficient food. There is no reason why anybody in this city should go hungry. The last time I was in there yesterday, they had fruits and vegetables and protein and boxes of cereals and everything you could imagine, bread. It's interesting, they don't have that rush of people coming in that they really anticipated, so people can go there for that, or get assistance, financial assistance for rent utilities, if they qualify. Thank you.
Thank you. Very quickly, we have Memorial Day coming up on Monday. This Friday, the fifteenth, is Peace Officers Memorial Day. With the situation that we are all in right now, I think, you know, remembering those folks is especially important now, as it always is. Also, all of the people who have been working in our hospitals, our healthcare agencies, food banks, all of those places, those people have certainly answered the call as well. And I really do appreciate the work that all of our nonprofits here in Boulder City have stepped up to perform for us. It's important in a community like this. Lastly, I'll say this. This virus is not gone yet. Over the past two weeks is the first opportunity we've really had here in Southern Nevada to do a large-scale testing out in the community rather than just at hospitals. We need to see the results of those things before we can tell, really, where we're at with the spread of this disease. I know everybody has just completely had it. They want to get out, they want to get back to work, they want to, you know, go to the restaurant, go to the bar, whatever. We've had enough of being in. But if we make a mistake now, if we push this too far before we know what's going on, this could become much worse very quickly. So I would just say, please, stay at home when you can, practice the social distancing. If you're out and you can't practice social distancing, you know, wear a face covering or a mask. We're doing it for each other, okay? If you don't care about it, okay, you don't care about it. But we're trying to do this for everyone, so that we can all get back to work, and we can keep each other safe. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting and wish everyone to stay well. Thank you.